For April 14, 2025. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkinson.
Present.
Mayor Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Mark.
Here.
Councilmember Carrapie.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to go now to item 7A, which is council reports. Does anyone have anything to report tonight?
I have two quick reports. I attended the RBR A meeting and they're continuing to reduce the number of boats on the water that are mandated by BCDC by September of this year. And there was also concerns over how much federal funding would be coming in the pipeline. I also attended the library and the discussion was around their budget, which the library is in good financial shape. And there was also concerns over future federal funding. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Mark.
Thank you. Just very briefly, over the past several weeks, the mayor, city manager, chief Wu and myself have been exploring ways to address the police department staffing challenges that we discussed at February's council retreat. We've explored a number of alternatives and narrow the possibilities. We're still working on this. I just wanted to update the council and then we'll have a recommended to this, we'll have a recommendation solution to the council to consider in May.
Okay, great. Anyone else?
Sure, a couple of updates. The first is on the, what everybody knows as the Yellow Bus Challenge. And so the, this is a JPA between Tiburon, Belvedere, and Red Union School District. And we've got a lot of exciting changes coming up for the next school year. So firstly, we are changing the routes to Belvedere, which will mean that kids going to and from Del Mar will have a much later pickup time in the morning and drop off time in the afternoon. So hopefully that will encourage more ridership from Belvedere-Del Mar students. But the second two pieces are that we're introducing, assuming this is approved by the board next month, new routes to and from St. Hillary School to take call of that traffic on the road, off the road at those peak times. And we're also exploring and hoping to execute a new after-school bus run, which will pick kids up from after-school activities during that peak 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. period and get those kids home to their families without their parents having to drive on Tiburon Boulevard. So hopefully, all of those things will mean less traffic, or at least that's the goal. And the second thing, I just wanted to provide a very brief update on the Caltrans project on Tiburon Boulevard. So as we understand that project's now at about 95, is it 95% design? As our council members will know, we submitted a letter to Caltrans last fall, raising concerns about safety issues, impacts on traffic. And we haven't as yet had a formal response in relation to that. And there have subsequently been letters from both the Yellow Bus Challenge and from Marin Transit because the designs don't seem to design for buses to be able to pick up any longer on that stretch of Tiburon Boulevard. So there's a staff meeting amongst all the different agencies organized in a couple of weeks' time, and hopefully they'll be able to find some kind of solution which allows buses to continue to operate safely, children to be able to ride safely, and that some form of bike lanes will be implemented that can be introduced without very negative impacts on our community.
And you're not talking simply about, or only about, the school buses. You're talking about all buses.
Yeah, so Marin Transit wasn't really brought into the loop until this stage. And so I don't know that Caltrans was aware that there were so many bus stops on that stretch of Tiburon Boulevard, and it affects four of the yellow bus stops. And one of them is very important for the new after-school drop-off. So it could have a really meaningful impact in terms of negatives for our community. And some of those kids are also lower-income kids, and so they might not have any other way to get to school. So the Yellow Bus Challenge has raised their concerns, and they follow on from Marin Transit and from Belvedere's concern. So hopefully, we will get further updates from Robert next month because I believe you're meeting with all of those different agencies, correct?
Yeah, on the 21st, we have an all-staff meeting.
Great, thanks.
And one report is the steering committee for the Bay Area sea level rise met last month. And this is really focused on how might the municipalities in Marin work together to address the issues facing us as it relates to sea level rise. We're still very much focused on governance. So how would the municipalities work together to either identify projects, or pilots, or grants, and so forth? And so a lot more work to be done, but very early stages in terms of governance.
Thank you. I have a few things to talk about, and that is that I'm the representative from the Belvedere City Council to the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Legislative Committee. And I just thought I would give a quick review of what our scope of advocacy is. So the group of MCC, MCC Legislative Committee members focuses on fiscal protection, which is to protect city revenues from the state, local control, support legislation that enhances local control of resources to provide services, oppose unfunded mandates, and for the continuation of local control of land use. A third focus area is transportation investment. And the fourth one is housing and land use to protect local government land use authority, oppose punitive housing legislation, and legislation that restricts or reduces local discretion on land use decisions. So I know these are topics that people hear about, and you may not realize that we actually are represented there, and we vote on behalf of Belvedere. So I attended the March meeting, and we discussed 11 different bills there that were coming down the line. We rely on a group called CalCities to lobby and inform us of their relevancy and urgency of all these bills and how they would affect the Marin jurisdictions. So as your representative, I do vote on our behalf and don't always have the opportunity to discuss it first. So I thought it would be a good idea for everyone to understand what it is I'm voting on, and if anyone had a problem with me, I'm casting my vote on behalf of the council in these areas. Any problems? No? Okay. So we did oppose three letters, SB 79, SB 445, SB 677. And we supported three different bills. And then this morning, I attended a CalCities North Bay Legislative Zoom meeting with Congressman Jared Huffman and Congressman Mike Thompson. I think he's on NAPA. Federal funding to California is at great risk right now. And so I was thinking how fortunate we were that I don't think we received much federal funding. And so many of these communities in the Bay Area receive quite a bit of federal funding. And we were told that if we are waiting for any funds, that we should reach out to our congressman, Jared Huffman, and let him know so that he could try to support the city as possible. So I didn't know if the FEMA grant funds might be worth running by him if we had a question about that. But otherwise, in a way, we're very fortunate that we don't rely on federal funds to run the city because people are in... The only thing that would affect us down the road would be probably for our pensions, but not yet. So we'll see how that goes. Okay, that's all I have. And Mr. Zadnich, the city manager report? Oh, public comment on the city council reports. Does anyone have a comment or question? Any on Zoom?
Yes, welcome.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. I have a comment on councilperson Mark's statement about the report about the police You're going to be considering, very soon, I hope, full recovery for the planning and building services. As you recall, the city has been paying $2 million a year for these services that are given to planning and building projects. And yet, though, the income that the people who are doing the projects pay is only half of that. So you've been, there's been $1 million there a year that you haven't been collecting, which is sad. And I'm so glad it's going to be worked on. However, it's going to take a significant amount of money for the police and for other things, particularly, of course, federal money maybe come down. So I do hope that you will go to the full recovery fee schedule as soon as possible. Of course, every month that you wait to do it is costing $85,000 a year that you could be recovering from the people, the projects that the people get planning and building services for. So please hurry up. Also, I don't think you should be raising the fees only to provide half, half of the correction, not collection, but correction, $545,000 more coming from them rather than the full $1 million. Full recovery means the full money. And the full money is $1 million a year. And I hope that you'll raise the fees to take care of those, their personal projects, and the people should be paying for it. And then you would have plenty of money for the police and for the other needs of the general fund. Plus, right now, the money's being taken out of the general fund to subsidize the expense of housing that's being built. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. In that case, Mr. Zadnich and the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Cooper. I wanted to start out by letting the council and the community be aware that new for 2025 is California's Daylighting Law, also known as AB 413. It prohibits anyone from parking within 20 feet of the approach to any marked or unmarked crosswalk. The purpose of the law is to improve visibility at intersections, especially for pedestrians and drivers, by keeping these areas clear of parked vehicles. This has been proven to help prevent collisions, particularly involving children and people with mobility issues. The law applies regardless of curb markings or signage, so even locations with unpainted curbs are affected. Each city is handling compliance with the law in their own way. After discussing it with Chief Wu and Public Works Director Boyd, we determined that the law applies to roughly 12 intersections in Belvedere, mostly in areas that have existing sidewalks. Later this month, DPW will post temporary signage at affected locations as a first step in an awareness campaign with the community. Following that, PD will consider issuing warnings and enforcement later this spring, along with installing permanent red painted curbs. More information on this will be published in this Friday's newsletter, so please be sure you're signed up for the Belvedere Breeze through the city's website. And then just one more comment regarding Mallard Point. Staff continue to meet with the Mallard developer team, and they're close to reaching a consensus on the reimbursement agreement. We're also starting our search for a project manager for that project internally in-house. This person would be tasked with day-to-day oversight of the complex project, along with the various conditions that were agreed upon during its approval. We expect this position will benefit us now as we gear up to review Mallard's submittals, and more so later in the year as the developer breaks ground for demolition installation of utilities and bulkhead replacement. This year's draft budget that Helga and I have been working on includes some initial funding to cover the cost of that project manager. And as I mentioned last month, this cost will be defrayed by permanent revenue from the project. That's all I have for now. Happy to take questions if there are any.
Any questions? Anyone from the audience have a question for our city manager? No, on Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Item 7C is our police chief Wu's report. Is this your quarterly report?
Yes, it is. Beth pulled up. Thank you. Thank you and good evening, Mayor Cooper and council members. Tonight, I am pleased to present the police department's first quarter report for 2025. The PD epitomizes the heart of community policing by delivering a curated approach that showcases unparalleled community caretaking. The PD's no calls too small philosophy reflects Belvedere's ethos and culture. Let me start it off with our RIPA stop data. During this quarter, 23 individuals were contacted for various vehicle code violations and suspicious activities. Four were detained for suspicious criminal activities, and 19 were contacted for traffic violations. Of these 23 detentions, 18 were officer-initiated, while five were related to calls for service. In all, 20 warnings and two citations were issued, along with one arrest made. The perceived racial composition consisted of 19 Caucasians, three Asians or Pacific Islanders, and one Black. During this quarter, the department handled 1,454 incidents, which included four, excuse me, included four Part I offenses, highlighting in bold, and four Part II offenses, also highlighted in bold. The remaining 1,400, excuse me, 1,446 incidents were classified as all other incidents. In other statistical snapshots, the department conducted 19 traffic stops, made two arrests with two prosecutorial referrals, and received multiple citizens' appreciations. We also updated seven and implemented one new lexical policies in accordance with amended laws and best practices. And these updates are detailed in the staff report. And as part of our ongoing professional development, PD personnel attended online training that were either mandated or for knowledge and skill enhancements. And PD continues to be active in community events, which we always take great pride and joy in being a part of. And this concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
It's just okay. Chief, would you mind going back to the breakdown of the 1446 calls? There were some numbers at the bottom just flashed too quickly. I think it was after that, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I must have skipped it. I beg your pardon.
Yeah, so of the remaining 1446, so 957 are officer-initiated. Would you describe that if you don't mind?
Sure. It means that the officer took the initiative of being proactive, whether it's conducting extra patrols, or assisting citizens, or anything that's not being dispatched to, that they took it upon themselves to act upon.
So any police activity that's report-worthy, I guess?
Yes, in a sense that every action taken by police are documented as an incident.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify, that 497, or 957, that includes everything that they did?
Correct.
Even if it was get my cat out of the tree?
Correct.
Okay.
But not if it was a call. If it was initiated by a resident, that's the 497.
That's correct. It will be reflected as calls for service.
If it was initiated by your officers or your department based on deployment, or patrols, or self-initiative, that's the 957.
Correct.
Wonderful, thank you.
Can I just follow up on that, then? So where do coyote reportings fit into this rubric here?
I was under the understanding, at least my understanding, and I apologize if I misunderstood, is that we were no longer reporting on coyotes. But if we are, I apologize, and I will definitely include it in the next quarters.
I think that's a good thing to exclude them. Thank you.
But since you brought up coyotes, I never let a minute go by without something to comment on. So the only thing I will say is that pups could be being born, we don't know. And so if that happens, coyotes are probably out more at night looking for food source. And I just want to remind everyone with small pets that if you're taking them out after dark, please, please go out with them. If possible, have them on a leash, but do not just let them out alone, unaccompanied. Thank you. We did, even though I hate saying it, we did have one pet, I just recalled, that was killed. It was 2:00 a.m. in the morning, a very small dog, let out alone. It was not by the owner, but by a dog sitter. So that was particularly sad. But thus, you know, a small dog out at 2:00 a.m. in the morning probably isn't a great idea anyway. So whether it was a coyote or not, we don't know, but the dog was killed. So please, please, please take care of your pets and be responsible pet owners. Thank you. Okay, now we get to some real fun. We have a presentation of the city, oh, public, sorry, public comment on the chief's report. I had it written down, I just forgot to read it.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Onto the City of Belvedere Spotlight Report Award to Diana Maureen. You can see this gorgeous award here. And welcome, Sandy Donnell. You have to push the button to be green.
Yes. Okay, well, I am happy to have been able to nominate Diana Maureen for the Spotlight Award. And clearly, she's a wonderful businesswoman who was able to operate her shop for 30-plus years. Congratulations for that. But the reason why, for me, the reason behind the nomination is not entirely because of her business acumen. That wasn't what really persuaded her to open Diana's on the boardwalk those many years ago. It's going to be a little bit history. 30 years ago, there were many more merchants on the boardwalk, a pharmacy, a children's clothing store, an art gallery called Shorebirds, Connie Wiley's Dovecot, a high-end gift shop run by a lovely man named Corky, and a beloved five-and-dime tended by Diana. One by one, they closed up. To me, most devastating of all was the five-and-dime. It had been relevant to all ages. Diana didn't see this as a business opportunity, but more as a call to action out of love of and commitment to our community. Where could children, parents, and grandparents shop? Where would Sally shop? Oh, my goodness. So she created a store that served the locals and intrigued the visitors. She stocked it full of items we needed, greeting cards, wrapping paper, candles, books, and amusing things, an entire selection devoted to children. I know that I, as well as many, have hopped from one generation to the next in the past 30 years as a parent, as a grandparent, as watching my kids go with their kids. I'm into Diana's store. Diana, you deserve this honor for your contribution to our community. You saw a hole and you filled it, not only through the goods you've brought to us. You've brought us joy to the downtown with your colorful and fanciful window displays. It's going to seem drowned, believe me, it's going to seem really drowned without your departure, I mean, with your departure. You've saved our skin with last-minute gifts. I've been in there right around Christmas when fellows have walked in and gone, "Oh, my God, what am I going to do with my Christmas stocking? Oh, Diana, what can you find for me? I need a last-minute gift." For birthdays, you've just have really just been a wonderful, wonderful contributor to our community, and we are going to miss you terribly. Though you deserve for sure a retirement in time with your daughter, and your daughter's darling dog, and travel, and your lovely husband, but you will really truly be missed. So thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yes, that's right. So Diana has her entourage here. Yeah, yeah, absolutely, we're going to miss you all, absolutely. And Sally, yeah. So maybe you can open up something in the store, maybe, you know, there you go. There's some spaces available. And thank you to the council for appreciating the contributions she has made. And yes, of course, you may say some. It's heavy, it's heavy.
First, I want to say thank you to Sandy for nominating me and for Madam Mayor, she's always just been Jane. I didn't even realize.
A long, long time.
A long time. And I wanted to say thank you to the whole community for supporting me all these years. And most of you I've known since I was a kid. And when I first started managing the dime store, people would come in and they'd say, "I want to speak to the manager." And I'd come bopping out with a ponytail and jeans, and they'd look at me and they'd say, "No, I want to talk to the real manager," and it was still just me. So, and mostly, I mean, then I decided to open my own place, which was the scariest thing that I'd ever done, putting my name up there. But I thought, if I don't try, I'm not going to know. And somehow, from the grace of the universe, I got Laura and Nora and Mercy and bunches of other girls along the way. But the three of them kept me going for years and years. And they were more than my coworkers or employees, they're my closest best friends, like sisters. And so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for supporting me. Sandy, can you guys turn around and do that little kissy thing?
Can you get a picture?
Well, no, actually, the light's not good. Can you come over here? This is reflecting.
I'll get one of you.
Your teeth are good. Oh, hold on. Yep, perfect. Actually, let me stand up because that's kind of, I want to have the railing in the picture. There you go, perfect. Well, no, I'm just thinking for the breeze.
Thank you. So I did want to say, but I think Sandy pretty much covered everything I had planned to say, that it really does give us great pleasure to give this award to Diana. Her business skills and consistent presence on the boardwalk really served so many residents' needs for so many years. And I think I did meet her when she was 16, so it's been just a few years. And you will definitely be missed. It's sad to look at your space, which I did do yesterday, and see nothing when there was always so much color. So, thank you.
Was it the first Monday?
I know. You slipped in, good for you. So thank you again for all your devotion to the community. And you have your whole crew, that's great. And since this was a presentation, there's no action taken tonight. So again, thank you very much. Do I have to do public comment? Is there any public comment on this item? No? Anything on Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you again, and thank you, Sandy. That was really nice of you to put this out there.
It's such a meaningful spot there.
Just great, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, there goes the audience. Where did Adam go?
Oh, he moved.
Okay, on to item 7E, another presentation by Adam Gavzer, who's here representing Concerts in the Park.
Good evening, Mayor Cooper and council members. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Concerts in the Park Committee, a volunteer group that works year-round to produce our summer concert series. We are now celebrating our 28th year of doing these concerts, and I think we can all agree that the concerts are a great community event that brings people together, and that we have worked over the years, certainly during my tenure, to increase the production values and the quality of the artists that we hire. So we are asking once again for your support this year, and I am open to any questions. Otherwise, I believe it's on consent calendar.
Correct. Any questions, anyone? No? Yes?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Is the...
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Is that it was oops, remarkable to me when we integrated Concerts in the Park into the city's website that you dominate traffic to our website by about ten to one for anything else. So it's obviously, that's a bit of an exaggeration, but it's obviously a hugely popular thing. So thank you for continuing to do that.
Great.
Anyone else? Okay, anyone here in the public or on Zoom?
I see none.
Okay, well, as Adam mentioned, thank you for all you're doing for the community with your whole committee. And I always look forward to these concerts, and I got my postcard with all the bands.
And know what the bands are, and we're still working on openers, so.
On my, already on my calendar. So thank you. And we will be doing the vote on your request in the consent calendar.
Real briefly, I just want to also thank the Police Department and the Department of Public Works for their support. Every concert, we get so much support out of them. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is another presentation. This one is on e-bike safety from Talia Smith, Director of Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs for the County of Marin.
Mayor Cooper, briefly, I'll just provide a bit of context before she gets started here. The issue of e-bike safety has been on Belvedere's radar, along with the county's radar for the last twelve months. During that period, the county of Marin established a working committee to address this growing concern. That group developed a model ordinance, which Belvedere would like to consider adopting in tandem with the county and our Tiburon neighbors. But before we agendize that item at a future meeting, Ms. Smith has volunteered to present on the history of this issue and what's intended through the model ordinance, so.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, and thanks for having me. My name is Talia Smith. I'm the county's Director of Legislative Intergovernmental Affairs. And I know you've seen me maybe at least on the MCCMC Legislative Committee. And I've been in conversations with your city managers, as well as the other cities and towns in Marin on this issue. So I'm actually gonna run through this presentation relatively quickly, but you all have these slides if you wanted to reference them or ask any questions at the end. Okay. All right, we're good to go. So just want to start on what this issue is and how we got to where we are today. So what we really saw was a surge in popularity among e-bikes and especially among school age youth that really went back to actually starting the year before the pandemic, but especially during the pandemic. And so what Marin first responders started to see between 2019 and 2022 was an increase of one hundred and ten percent of 911 calls related to youth on bikes. And at the time, first responders were not tracking 911 calls for bikes versus e-bikes. But what they just saw was this spike in accidents of kids that were going to the hospital and having first responders on the scene. So in 2023, our Public Health Officer, Dr. Matt Willis, worked with our first responders to actually become one of the first areas, to our knowledge, in the whole country that actually started tracking 911 data separating out e-bikes from bikes. And what we saw, which we're gonna jump to in the next slide, was a very big difference of the rate of e-bike injuries in the ten to fifteen year old age group compared to other age groups versus when you took isolated just for conventional bicycles. The other note I should say, and we do have Dr. John Ma here, who's been certainly a leader in the medical community, is there's been several very, very serious, high profile injuries and even in some cases deaths of youths on e-bikes here in Marin. What trauma surgeons were seeing were accidents that were much closer to vehicle accidents, such as on motorcycles from some of the youths that were on these e-bikes versus what typically first responders might see in a bicycle accident. On this next slide, this is actually an open source dashboard that our Public Health Team has been keeping since 2023. And what we put up here is on the left hand side, conventional bike accidents. So as you can see, the ten to fifteen year old age group is higher than other age groups. But for e-bikes, it is about five times higher. So that is a very significant difference. And these are all 911 accidents in Marin County again. So just first, very quickly, there are three types of legal e-bikes in California. I do want to just note that e-bikes across the country are regulated a little bit differently in each state. So when I say class one, two, three, this is very specific to California, not specific nationally. Class one and class two have a motor assisted speed cap of twenty miles an hour. However, class two does not require pedaling for the motor to kick in. So this is where you see those e-bikes that have throttles on the handlebars. In class three actually goes up to twenty eight miles an hour. Legal class three e-bikes also do not have a throttle on the handlebar. But it is already state law that you have to be over sixteen to ride a class three e-bike. That is already in state law. So what I'm gonna bring to you now and on this screen is actually a Super 73. These are one of the models that we've seen that are really popular with school age youth in Marin. But we're gonna talk about what this law that is before you in Marin and what we have done locally to try to address this issue. So I want to note that Supervisor Mary Sackett is the President of the Board this year, and myself actually met on the federal level with the Consumer Product Safety Commission. We are still doing advocacy with them, along with Assembly Member Damon Connelly and our Public Health Officer. We jumped to the state bills in one minute, the one that we're talking about today. We have supported state bills that address this issue. And really importantly, I just want to highlight that we see this as a very cross jurisdictional issue here in Marin. This is certainly not limited on a jurisdiction by jurisdiction basis. So we formed this special committee that has representatives from several towns in Marin, public safety schools, and they have been working together on launching a countywide public safety campaign. We're really excited about it. It's under the works right now. We're trying to get it out before the end of the school year. And then also considering these new Assembly Bill seventeen seventy eight ordinances, which I will describe to you in just a minute. I also want to note, we've made multiple presentations to the Transportation Authority of Marin Board. I'm gonna skip over this slide. It just lists a bunch of bills this last year. Really, what the point of the slide is to tell you is that there's actually a number of folks in the California Legislature that actually see the issue of youths and e-bikes as a very serious safety concern. There's been a number of bills to address this. So I want to start with what we're gonna talk about today, Assembly Bill seventeen seventy eight. This was our Assembly Member Damon Connelly, who brought forward this legislation last year. When we talk about age limits on something like a bicycle that is actually regulated by state traffic laws, so without a bill to change that state law, yourselves as a city council or any other municipal body could not actually impose a new age limit on something like a bicycle or a motorcycle or a car that is all done at the state level. So what did this bill do? It actually allowed municipalities in Marin County to take class two e-bikes and essentially put them in the same category as class three e-bikes already are in California, which says we're gonna limit them to riders sixteen and over. I also want to add in here that it also requires helmets for riders of all ages on class two throttle e-bikes. Currently under state law, if you're over eighteen, you do not have to wear a helmet on a class two e-bike. So that's what Assembly Bill seventeen seventy eight does, because it was passed on a pilot basis. It is an opt-in bill. That means jurisdictions in Marin County have to vote to opt in and pass this as a local ordinance. And that is what your council is going to be deciding, not today, but potentially at a future hearing. And we, the county, actually passed the first reading of our ordinance at the end of March. And what we are aiming for, which I will discuss the next slide, is for cities that do opted in Marin County, a coordinated summer 2025 implementation date. So I just want to note, we have been talking to the cities and towns. We've been talking to the city managers, we've been talking to TAM, to the MCCMC Legislative Subcommittee. We talked to them last summer about it. And where we are today again is now at the stage of both developing a countywide public education campaign, which we'll talk about the next slide, and then also considering ordinances. Want to note that while these ordinances do pass a new law, we don't think laws are going to resolve our e-bike safety issues. That's why we are really working hard on this collaborative, really teen eye catching, public safety campaign that is really gonna focus on getting teens on pedal assist e-bikes, if they are on an e-bike, and then really enforce some of the key safety messaging, things around maintenance. E-bikes require much more frequent brake replacement than conventional bikes. And if you purchase the e-bike online, you may not have a local shop that will do that maintenance. And so if you do not have a local shop to do the maintenance, then you should be purchasing that bike locally or make sure you have a bike that can be maintained. And then also safe riding habits. We also know that one of the key issues with these class two e-bikes is that there are kids that have made aftermarket modifications. Legally, they can go up to twenty miles an hour. But it is fairly simple for some of these bikes to make aftermarket modifications to go up to forty or fifty miles an hour. I, this is the second to last slide. I just want to highlight some timeline of key actions since we have been working on this issue. So just want to note, in the fall, we formed our special committee. We have been discussing this with that special committee. And in March 2025, the county passed our first reading. And as we noted here in red, we are now discussing with cities and towns in hoping to have a coordinated. I should probably peel that back and say we're not, not exactly July one, but July, summer 2025 coordinated implementation date of these new rules. And we're hoping to really have actually all of Marin cities and towns and county on board so that it's not confusing to folks and really, really clear about where they can ride a class two bike. This is the final slide. What are we looking at for success metrics in this? We are here today because we, this issue was actually brought to us as policymakers and folks who work in government. It was brought to us by medical professionals, by families of children who've gotten into very serious accidents and brought to us by the data that we started collecting, where we saw this very, very disproportionate rate of 911 injuries, which again, we just want to emphasize that this is not falling down on your bike. This is not a bruise or even a, you know, a sprained arm. This is a very serious injury where an ambulance or fire department or police officer was called and seeing some of these very, very serious injuries. So one of these metrics is to see that bike accident rate go down. And we are very actively, of course, monitoring this with our data. We've also started monitoring of the youth that are in injuries, what class of e-bike it was. And what we're seeing is in the initial data we've collected, the vast majority of these class two throttle e-bikes. So seeing that accident rate go down is gonna be key. And then also the impact and reach of our public safety campaign, which we also hope in terms of the impact of that campaign and these new rules is it will make it really, really clear to parents of middle schoolers and elementary kids that young kids should not be on throttle assisted e-bikes, that if they are gonna be on an e-bike, it should be the pedal assist e-bike or conventional bicycle. All right, that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. I will admit that we've had a lot of discussion in the community about this problem. So we're really grateful that you're providing this for us, the way to move forward. Thank you. Are there any questions, Councilmember Burke?
Just a couple. Thank you. That was really helpful and a very important issue. If you go back to slide three, the data, I just want to make sure I understand, on the right side, where you were talking about the e-bike accidents per, is it?
It's per thousand people.
But wouldn't it, would it be fair to say that the, the usage of e-bikes also is very different by those age groups as well?
This is, this is correct, and we actually don't have that data in terms of which age groups use e-bikes.
More.
Period.
So at some point, I mean, it would be, it would be really helpful to see this as a, yeah, indexed against actual usage among that cohort.
And this was actually a point that actually Councilmember Carmel on the Transition Authority of Marin Board brought up. And we have discussed this with our Public Health Team, because we just don't have the data of e-bike ownership by age. It's really hard to break that out.
Yeah, sure. And then the other thing is, the public safety campaign, I'm just curious, are you testing the messaging? So it sounds like it's two pronged. So it's going to target parents, but then also the teens or riders themselves. And are you testing the messaging, particularly with the teen cohort with that cohort?
I love that you asked that question, because that was actually the first group that we brought some of the messaging with. We actually involved them in the RFP panel. We took two members of the Youth Commission to select our, our marketing consultants. And they actually have been providing review on the art and the slogan of the campaign, which is actually gonna be E Bikers Club as something that we wanted them to, we asked questions of, you know, would you put this sticker on your water bottle? Would you wear this hat? You know, what do you, would this poster catch your attention? So I'm, we're pretty excited to get some of those materials out, because some people have seen it and they're like, wow, this doesn't even look like a public education campaign, which is the reaction that we wanted.
That's great. That's a great, best practice. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, and thank you. That was a really interesting presentation. The first is, can you just talk through the enforcement process?
Definitely. So I, under Assembly Bill seventeen seventy eight, if you're under sixteen, right, you could not be on a class two e-bike. However, probably as your police chief will let you know, and other police chiefs in Marin County that I've been discussing will let me know. You know, please don't take action based on presumed age of an individual. It's just, you know, not how police enforce. And so really what we see with seventeen seventy eight is the vast majority of citations are probably gonna be what they call secondary infractions. So the primary infraction would be somebody is, went through a stop sign, is speeding, is, is riding recklessly. And then if they're also under sixteen, then they'll get a secondary infraction, which is they cannot be riding this bike. So we do know that as an enforcement, it's more of a messaging tool than an actual enforcement tool. Just because we know law enforcement are just not gonna be most commonly in the position of making arrests based, again, I said, on the presumed age of an individual. It just goes against a lot of department policies. But it will give them a tool when they are interacting with youth on e-bikes to have really clear messaging. So up until now, schools have put out information using wording such as, we strongly recommend you do not purchase a class two throttle e-bike. And that is gonna change to it is illegal for your under sixteen year old to be on a class two throttle e-bike.
But, but even if there's a kid who is caught multiple times for other reasons, continuing to ride, there's no enforcement mechanism. You can't ticket the parents. There's nothing you can do, so they can just continue to cheat if they desire to do so.
Up to individual agencies, whether they decide to impound a bike, for instance, that would be up to a local agency. That was their policy decision.
But there's nothing in the legislation that outlines.
There's nothing in the legislation, no. And actually, when this was being presented to the State Assembly Transportation Commission, there was actually, from other members, others, assembly members on that commission, a clear message that they did not want this bill to increase law enforcement interactions with youth. So they actually even added, you know, some additional tracking required with it, and they didn't want the citations referred to a court. So if you actually read the legislation, it won't be referred to a court. They wanted it to really be a safety tool, not an additional interaction between law enforcement and youth tool.
And the second question that I think you've sort of answered, which is the reckless driving component, because I see kids driving incredibly fast, no handed, standing up, riding at thirty miles an hour on these things. That's already some form of infraction, is it? And police already enforce that?
That is already an infraction.
Okay, but again, it's just a warning, because these kids are under six, maybe under sixteen, and so there's no, it's just a warning system again?
Yeah, and, and I would have to say, I'm probably this, I'm probably not the, this traffic citation person to cite what that is. But I do know today, let's say if a kid are riding, standing up, essentially riding the e-bike like it's not legally meant to be ridden or doing a wheelie, then that is an infraction on its own today. If that individual is also under sixteen in a post seventeen seventy eight world, then they would be given a secondary infraction that essentially says, and you're legally not allowed to ride this bike. And then that would be up to the individual agency as well as to what additional enforcement mechanisms happen after that. They will be required to take a safety class that we're also talking to Safe Routes to School and MCBC about, because they've done in-person safety classes. And we know, for instance, Mill Valley has been doing in-person safety classes for a while for their e-bikes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Talia. That was wonderful. And forgive my lack of understanding of broader state legislature processes. But why wouldn't the state or why wouldn't the Assembly pass the law as a state law as opposed to letting or, or asking every single municipality to follow their model ordinance?
I feel like I, almost these questions are planted. Assembly Bill 1778 was actually introduced in December 2023 as a statewide modification of the traffic code. It was not a Marin only pilot. It simply changed the state traffic code to add the same age restrictions that class three have. And I, as I noted, there was a lot of not immediate support from the Assembly Transportation Commission. They felt like there was a bill actually. Whoop, here we go. In 2023, it was Senate Bill 381 that commissioned the San Jose State University Minetta Institute to study e-bike safety. And they aren't supposed to deliver that report to the legislature until January 2026. So the Assembly Transportation Commission said, we're not going to make a new law about e-bikes until that report comes out. And so really there was, you know, Assembly Member Damon Conley was not the only legislator who wanted to do something about e-bikes in his jurisdiction. And so really the option that they were left with was you can do a pilot for your county and allow your municipalities to pass these laws. Or we're going to do nothing and wait until the January 2026 study comes out. And so actually two counties last year had pilots passed that this is an issue in. So Marin County and actually San Diego County had its own, you know, actually similar, but a little bit different law, but similar in the sense that it almost looks the exact same as this legislation saying every municipality in San Diego County can pass a code, but theirs was, ours is limiting class two to 16 and up. Theirs was just not allowing anyone under 12 to ride any e-bike period. But 12 and up could ride class two. So the, ours were different, but they were both one county pilots.
Thank you. And, and just one quick follow up. So, so Robert, I guess I, I, I assume our process is to, at this point, take whatever comments and whatever discussion follows this presentation and potentially put it on an agenda for a follow-up ordinance that would match what the county is recommending.
Yeah, I think that's the intent. Let's hear the presentation tonight, see if it's worth agendizing for a future meeting and bring it back in May, perhaps for our first reading of the ordinance and the second reading, which would be a little bit late, but July 9th is our council meeting for the second ordinance, which would go into effect on that same day, essentially.
Oh, because you couldn't do June?
Sorry, June 9th, the effective day would be July. Yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I had the pleasure of listening to your presentation at the TAM meeting in January. And I didn't know much about the difference between class one, two, and three. And I walked out feeling at least I knew what was going on. When you say the class two bikes are limited to 20 miles an hour, I see kids that pass me up driving down the road and I'm doing the lawful 25. So it's obvious that they're adjusting the throttle or they're, they're, they're putting larger batteries or something in or?
Yeah. You know, I'm, I'm going to call these aftermarket modifications. And, and I just want to, you know, maybe highlight on this slide that there's a, there's a lot of prongs that we need to get at to address this issue. I think one is this new tool locally. That's a really clear message to parents in schools. One of the other prongs is some of these e-bike manufacturers. Some of them sell e-bikes online with a QR code that, that comes and you go to the QR code and it shows you how to essentially break the motor so that it can go up to 50 miles an hour. And so with us, that issue is actually needs to be addressed at the federal consumer product safety commission. Because that is an issue of manufacturer safety that we as a municipality actually cannot really meaningfully address. We can try to meaningfully address it through our local bike shops, but actually most of our local bike shops are already selling legal e-bikes. A lot of these ones are purchased online. There are, have been some state bills. There's one last year to try to get out these aftermarket modifications. But we really do see a, a really strong importance of trying to address this federally. And I just want to note that, you know, we've been recording this data locally, but we see in Marin of this school age group and the, the really disproportionate risks was actually mirrored in a federal consumer product safety study two years ago on micro mobility. So it covered e-bikes, e-scooters, hoverboards. And what they had was a hugely disproportionate accident rate for children and that was national data. So we do know that they are aware of this issue nationally. We just actually are, are pretty far out ahead in Marin and some of the actions we've taken.
I want to thank you very much for taking your time and coming tonight because I think it's a great education for all of us. We truly appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. I had a question about educating the community. I know that's a big aspect of what you're doing. So are you developing the educational materials now? And then will they be available for all cities to use them as whatever?
Yes, we are developing them right now. We actually last week had a few members of our special committee that, that had members from the school, various council members that were on it, police, police representatives would give some feedback on those early drawings. And we hope that we are actually done with most of the creative work and have the website launched by end of May. That's our goal right now so that we can actually distribute it to the schools before the end of the school year. And then we will definitely be asking our cities and towns as partners to get some of this messaging out. So a lot of it's going to be posters that we're hoping we can put in downtown areas. And we're actually working on location specific posters. So we have like an e-bike Mill Valley one and we're hoping to have a Tiburon Belvedere one as well. So we'll work on that. And they have some, they've been incorporating some of the local school mascots in it as well as some of the local landmarks. So it's really this hyper local campaign.
That sounds great. I look forward to seeing that because I think that'll make a big difference. But one of, one of the questions that I hear is that after parents have already bought these bikes and put in that much money, even when we then go ahead and hopefully pass this ordinance, how would one encourage them? Are you at all talking about a buyback program? Or is there a way for people to give an option to people? Well, what are we supposed to do with these bikes?
Right. It, it's a great question. It actually is one several constituents have contacted us about. There's a few local bike shops that have an upcycle program. To get, of course, depends on the individual. If, if somebody is months away from turning 16 and they know their kid wants to ride it, of course, we're, you know, going to encourage them to wait until their child is 16. If somebody is years away from being 16, you know, we may send them a link to some of these upcycles where you can trade in an e-bike for a different class. But, but we've definitely heard this. And what we also want to say is you may all be aware, but most actually middle schools in Marin last year essentially banned class two e-bikes from being parked on their facilities. And the schools actually heard the same concern. But the schools actually were ahead of the cities and towns in this case. So already in Marin, if you're a middle schooler and you already bought a class two e-bike, a lot of parents have already kind of made that reconsideration this last year. If they bought their kid that bike to get to middle school, because the middle schools are saying, you know, so many kids are getting to accidents on the way to and from school that you can't have these class two e-bikes parked on campus anymore. So we do know about this concern and, and we also think that in many cases, a lot of them have been addressed with that issue with the schools the last year actually for banning them on campus.
Okay. Thank you.
Isn't there also a problem sprouting now where kids are parking off campus, riding to school and parking off campus at some alternate location?
There have certainly been some recent San Francisco Chronicle articles about that at White Hill, actually. And we've heard about it at some other sites elsewhere in Marin County. But we again do hope that that is a perfect example of where we, we can't really leave this just to the schools to take care of because, you know, they're, they're trying and it's, it's not really perfect because middle schoolers can still ride these bikes and then park them off campus. So this is where we actually think the, the, the local laws will really, really help. Because the messaging will be really clear of, you actually just can't be on these bikes if you're 13 or 14.
Okay. Well, thank you. And thanks again for taking the time to coming and educate us. Is there anyone in the audience with a question on the e-bikes?
Mayor Cooper, my name is Bob Mittelstedt.
Oh, hi.
I'm with a nonprofit called E-Bike Access.
Yeah, we got your letter. Thank you.
Okay. We, if I can just explain a little bit, we basically advocate for expanded access for e-bikes. Mostly up on Mount Tam with the Water District. But as the part of that effort, we've also learned what Talia was talking about. Thanks to the work of Dr. John Ma, Matt Willis, we've learned that these bikes, these throttle bikes that the kids are riding are really dangerous. And to your, to the question about the data, I volunteered with Safe Routes to School to go around and see what these kids were actually riding. The 10 to 15 year old group with the higher accident rate. And it turns out that at the middle schools, about 80 to 85% of the bicycles are regular bicycles. 15% are the throttle ones. They have about the same number of accidents. So we've got 85% accounting for 30 accidents and 15% accounting for the same number, which indicates to me how dangerous these are. When this was before the San Anselmo Council, there was some talk about, you know, the data. And Vice or Mayor at the time, Eileen Burke, said, I don't want to quibble about the data. I know what my eyes see. And what my eyes sees on the street are these throttle bikes that these kids are riding, go much faster. They don't have to pedal them. They go much faster than 20 and they're dangerous. So that's what's causing the problem. Even though we support e-bikes generally, we completely support the ordinance that is being proposed. And even, I would like to see enforcement of it, but even if it's never enforced by the police, it will have great benefit. It gives parents, for example, another reason to tell their 12 year old or their 13 year old who wants one because their friends have it. No, I'm sorry, you can't. They're illegal. It also gives schools and add, middle schools an added basis to disallow them. And it will give the police a basis when they're parked off campus to say those are illegal. You can't take, take them to school and you can't park them across the street here. So I think, you know, the data is there, our common sense is there, the enforcement is available. And as you say, the, these do go over 20 and it's not just the aftermarket. The most popular brand we found in Marin is called Super 73. And they had provided an app to the kids where they download it on their phone. They press one button and it quote unlocks it so they can go 30 to 35. And that's why you're seeing kids pass you when you go on the speed limit. So for all those reasons, we support this, this initiative completely and we encourage you to pass it as soon as you can.
Thank you. I had one quick question. E-bikes don't have speedometers, like a motorcycle, do they?
Most don't.
Most don't.
I, I have a class one e-bike and it has a speedometer or an odometer on it. Or a speedometer, I guess.
Right.
But, but most of these don't.
That's what I was afraid of. So that someone wouldn't even know how fast they're going necessarily.
Yeah. I, I'll tell you, these, these kids do.
I mean, they know, but a parent might not. So, okay. Well, thank you again. And as noted, I'm hoping we'll agendize this so we are not taking a vote tonight, which I know you were hoping would happen, but this is a presentation. So we'll keep your letter for the next time.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have something you'd like to say?
Yes, Mayor Cooper.
Thank you.
For the town council. My name is John Ma. I'm a surgeon over at Marin Health Medical Center. Just wanted to thank you for having this conversation this evening on this really important topic to amplify the important points made by Talia. You know, Marin is the home of mountain biking and what we've witnessed at the hospital, I'm a surgeon, they're working with colleagues up and down the state and nationally, we've realized that Marin County is also the first to recognize the problem with e-bikes. It's really the higher rate of speed. We've witnessed accidents that resemble motorcycle accidents. And UCSF researchers have noted that there's a 49 fold increase in head injuries over the past five years. What we're understanding now, we've seen the rates of 911 calls, but it's really the number of deaths. The likelihood of dying after an accident on an e-bike is an order of magnitude higher than on a traditional pedal cycle. And the data that we've gathered just in the past week that's deeply concerning is that there's been an exponential number of e-bike accidents in the state of California in just this past year. That's really out of proportion to the number of e-bikes that are being used. And I'd really like to applaud a patient of mine, Miss Amelia Stafford, who was a 15 year old San Rafael High School student who spoke out publicly after being very seriously injured in Marin County and had to be airlifted out to Oakland. She has shared her story publicly. She was the inspiration for Assembly Bill 1778. And I really applaud her courage to share her story to protect both youth and adult riders across the state. So again, thank you for your investment and your time in having this discussion tonight. Please let us know if there are any ways that the San Francisco Marin Medical Society or the American College of Surgeons can help in this discussion. They both strongly support this legislation. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your investment in time. Does anyone have a question for Dr. Ma? No. Okay. Thank you so much. It was, we really appreciate everyone coming tonight to do the presentation. Anyone in here in the public that had a question at all? Any on Zoom?
I see none.
Okay. Well, thank you again for a great presentation. And so, Robert, is this, oh, oops, sorry. Is this appropriate for us to agendize then? Does it work to come back in May so that we can have the second reading in June in time for July?
Yeah, with, with your agreement, I think that would be the plan, come back in May and then second reading in June. July 9th, like I mentioned, would be the actual effective date, but I think that still matches what the county's goals are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Robert, will that include analysis from the police department in terms of how they will police this? Because that seems like it's down to individual police departments.
I, I think that's something that we could include at least as a discussion topic, question and answer. I'm not sure if we'll put in the report, but we'll look into it definitely.
Thank you.
I also think, Robert, that you, a lot of these ordinances have obviously the, the penalties and the, the opportunities to cure with traffic school or e-bike traffic school, for lack of a better way of describing it. And I know that Mill Valley and Tiburon, Mill Valley in particular, has set up their program. I would get on that list quickly. I would call Urban quickly to figure out how you can, because I don't think we can afford to do it ourselves. We'd want to join one of them. And I think a number of the, the municipalities will want to get involved in that. And if, if I would, I would jump ahead a little bit, or I will jump ahead a little bit. I think that traffic school, knowing the propensity for people to pay a fine and forget about it, is probably an important aspect of this program. And I would recommend it not be necessarily a cure, but a requirement. That would be my opinion going forward.
Okay.
And I think Tiburon is already working with Mill Valley, if I remember correctly, on that e-bike school.
Yeah, I understand there are some challenges which we can report on next month to that program and implementing it. But there are some, I guess, third party options, like you said, traffic school, they're online based that other agencies are looking into as well. So may not be quite as good, but.
It's an easy way to cheat.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that are considered to be non-controversial unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the council, staff or public. The consent calendar will be adopted by one motion. Council will take public comment on all items on the consent calendar when the calendar is called. Do council members have a question or do you want to have any item that you would like pulled from tonight's calendar?
I have a question.
Okay. You have a question. Can you tell me what item it is? Okay. Eight E?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a question not, I'm not proposing pulling it.
Okay, just a question. E, okay.
I actually have a. I actually have a, I guess, a comment on 8E, which isn't so much a question, which I'm not sure would fit our town, our city councils.
Is it better?
Definition of a question, it's more of a comment, and I also have a comment on 8F. So I'd actually suggest we vote and pull 8E and 8F. If that's okay, Mayor.
Sure. Okay, then can I have a motion?
I can make a motion to approve the consent calendar, 8A through 8I, removing 8E and 8F.
Good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, sorry, what?
Public comment.
Roll call? Oh, public comment.
Public comment on this item.
Before the vote, right.
Ask them if someone else wants to.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on any of the consent calendar items or on Zoom?
I see none.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, then on to 8E, which is a motion to approve a contract with Stetson Engineers in the amount of $290,521 for the beach stabilization project. Kevin, would you like to start?
Sure. Question is, given that we only received one response, how do we benchmark to ensure that these prices are good prices?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Burke. The way we've benchmarked this is just looking at typical costs of this type of work as a proportion of a project like this. And discussing with our city engineer, this, so this comes out at about 10% of the construction cost, which he said is very, very much in line with typical costs for something like this.
But that comes from the engineer themselves?
No, that comes from our city engineer, so John, no. Yeah.
My comment is related to that same issue. And I understand that you did not receive other bids for the project. And I understand why they wouldn't necessarily bid because of the fact that there's a great deal of ramp-up, I'm sure, to appropriately and adequately address the concerns of the city and the services that we require. And Stetson is very ably suited to do that, given their experience with the city. I guess I'm a little bit concerned about that, just as far as not having a fresh eye on this at any point in the project and not, especially when we see Tiburon doing a similar project in a different manner. Granted, much different matter without the same sort of structural integrity that we're proposing for a radically different price. I guess I would have liked to have seen other bids so that we could have had a fresh eye at it. So I guess that's just a comment that I'll express to the council and to the community that it would be nice to get not so much a data peer review, but an alternate perspective on a significant project, $3 million at the end of the day, more than that.
Yeah, I think Tony hit the nail on the head, just in terms of the, you know, that range that we typically see for a project of this size. They base it oftentimes in the industry norm is between 10 and 20%, like the staff report says. This, to your point, I know, it's not another data point, but.
Yeah, but it also assumes a three is a three.
Correct.
As opposed to maybe a different scope or scale of a project.
Right. One thing we are contemplating, and we had a meeting last week, is bringing a project manager and a construction manager, be the same firm in early. And I think that maybe addressed your concern and certainly our concern as well about having another set of eyes on this, certainly one that's, you know, familiar with marine construction early in the process. So they would be involved. We'd put some money in the budget for next year in the proposal. They'd be involved early at looking at some of these, at the RFP that's been drafted now, the agreements, and then making sure not just that the project is built according to spec, but other elements of the project, including finance, in terms of cost, what we're paying Stetson Engineers to do the work. I think it'd be another great, aside from having a second data point, certain fourth bids for this project would be another great way of just, you know, controlling costs and having some checks and balances.
Yeah, I would certainly support that. I guess the second, thank you, thank you. The second question I have is, it seems a little inconsistent to be proposing or having Stetson propose a time and materials contracts with a total proposed not-to-exceed amount and then adding a contingency on top of it.
Yeah, so the contingency is not something that we're awarding to Stetson. That's just extra money that we're allocating. Sometimes in the past, we've allocated funds for a project. Oftentimes, it happens in public works, and then you end up going over and we have to come back to city council to request an amendment to that budget to be able to pay for the additional scope of work. So it's just a mechanism that Tony and I said, let's start plugging into projects going forward. You know, you have their base bid amount that's being awarded, and then we have the option of, you know, increasing that budget if they're inevitably, it's usually the case where you have a change order later on.
They know it now.
I don't know, I know, I know. I mean, frankly, I'd rather you come back for that 30K than just having.
Say there's none.
Than having it in there.
Well, I mean, most of the contractors, believe it or not, they are smart enough and savvy enough to pull up our budget for the project, and they know what we have, even if we don't place it in the staff report. And they're usually bidding on a project based on that, so it's all pretty transparent.
Oh, down the road, absolutely. But this is for the design and engineering services associated with creating the scope of work and creating the project plans. So, and if it is a time and materials, and if it is not to exceed this, unless there's something radically different that we propose or we suggest, and that they themselves have created this scope.
Yeah.
So it's hard to see that things wouldn't change in this scope. This isn't going to be the price of steel coming from China. This isn't going to be, you know, things that will affect the price later on. So that contingency seems a little bit belted suspenders to me.
I think the reason that's plugged in there right now also is, and there's hints of this when you're looking at the proposal that Stetson provided, there's certain things that are unknown at this stage, even in the design side, how much mitigation we're going to have to do for the project and how much collaboration there is going to be with the state federal agencies. They recognize that and they call it out. And I think it's part of the reason that we plug that number in there is so that if we do, like I said, we get to that point where we do have a, you know, an increased line item or more time that's being allocated for each line item. We have the ability to direct funds to that. That makes sense.
It still doesn't make sense, because arguably, that's outside the 290 from a budgeting perspective, you know, mitigation and anything else that comes about. That's balance of the 3-point-something million dollars. This 290 is specifically for their, arguably in quotes, and I'll recognize that, known work.
Yeah, and for sure. So I just wanted to mention that they had said that there are certain services that may be required in this work that aren't being covered in this scope of services that they've included, one of which is additional environmental sequoia analysis related to the EIR, the existing EIR that we have, and also surveying, if there's additional surveying that's needed on top of what they expect. So those are the two items that they have said are not included in their scope, but they've highlighted as possible additional costs.
Okay, I would just, I'm okay with this, based on your feedback. I just recommend you, as this is reported back to us, and, you know, we're looking at the budget next month or later this month and then next month, let us know how much you invade into this contingency, because
Yeah, and.
I don't love that approach necessarily.
Yeah, definitely understandable. I mean, we also want to be as transparent as possible. And one thing to add is that, you know, the contingency is for an amount, you know, 30,000. But if the cost of something is 2,000, then, you know, coming back to council for approval of the smaller items is what we're trying to avoid.
So I have a question with this discussion. So why do you think we only got one bid? Is it the way the bid wording went out? Or is it a limited amount of people that do marine work? I mean, is there a lack of engineers out there?
I think all three, really. The Stetson are quite well-known nationwide and in this area are kind of the preeminent marine and hydrological engineering firm. And their name is on all of the work that we've had done on this, on our roads so far. So one of the, you know, one of the firms that had been intending to put in a proposal, they called me up quite late in the process and said, we didn't realize Stetson would be putting in a proposal for this. We're not going to bother if Stetson are as well. So, yeah. And another kind of important point is that John Mo, the city engineer at the beginning, kind of said, you know, he said that was going to happen. I mean, if Stetson have, you know, been working on this work up until now, the expectation from most people looking at all of this would be that they would be continuing with the work. And if they weren't, then they would be curious as to why.
I mean, I assume if somebody else had bid for it, it'd be a much higher bid because they'd have so much more legwork to do because they don't have that base that Stetson already has in this project.
Absolutely, yeah. There's efficiencies for us and for Stetson in that they already, their team already has a familiarity and understanding of the site and the work. The team of subconsultants that they have also is familiar with the work. So it's, yeah, it is definitely, yeah, I think there's good efficiencies there.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item 8F. And the purchase of an electric pickup truck to replace public works vehicle with an allocated budget of $61,000.
Yeah. Sorry, my only question here is, this seems like a locally-used vehicle for utility work and so forth. And my question is, is it worth the, you know, 25% premium for an EV versus a hybrid or even an internal combustion engine for this point? I mean, I understand we have our climate action goal, Climate Action Plan, but I don't know that you're going to get a big variance in greenhouse gas emissions for this. And would it be charged with renewable energy anyway, to Sally's point many times? So I guess my question is, is it worth the premium for how we will be utilizing this vehicle? I mean, if we're considering replacing a police vehicle with a hybrid, which probably gets much more usage than this would, why wouldn't we consider a hybrid as well?
So, yeah, I think it's a really good question. That's certainly one of the things that Tony and I have been talking about quite a bit over the last week or two, leading up to this. But the thinking, I think you're absolutely right. That vehicle, even the one that's replacing, if you look at the odometer, is what, maybe 30,000 or 40,000 miles? And it was purchased in 1997. So, no, they do not get a lot of use. The thing Tony and I were discussing is how can we best utilize, how can we best, if we are going to do a vehicle purchase for public works, where can we best utilize that, where it's going to have the most impact if we are going to go with a fully-electric alternative? The idea had been thought that Tony could either graduate one of the vehicles that we currently have in public works, his vehicle, down to the staff, then he would use this vehicle home for commuting in emergencies. That would drastically reduce our greenhouse gas impact and also save us thousands a month on fuel costs that we're currently paying. And then as that vehicle, the Colorado, ends up getting higher mileage and starting to wear down, we would replace that one with either a hybrid or a fully-electric vehicle. Similar to the police department, though, we do want to make sure that we have redundancy across the board. We don't want to have all electric vehicles as 90% of our fleet. We have to have a pretty solid mix. I think one thing that we are going to have to realize, and the reason that we are proposing an all-electric vehicle for this purchase is that we're going to be purchasing a street sweeper soon. And those are cost prohibitive when you start looking at the fully-electric ones. I know we've had discussions with our city council, previous city council, yeah, over years, trying to get that thing replaced. And it's just not, even with the technology, how it's developed over the last few years, we're just, we can't afford it, bottom line. And there aren't enough, there isn't enough, I guess, energy around Marin and with our neighbors to try and partner on something like that for a shared piece of equipment. So I think when you look at it from a balanced perspective, you know, we're buying a very expensive piece of equipment that's not necessarily, you know, the best in terms of greenhouse gas emissions. We're offsetting that by replacing it in smart ways in other areas for the department, if that makes sense.
I do have a suggestion there. So Marin Clean Energy has just introduced a new program that allows you to be paid to allow Marin Clean Energy to draw from your battery to charge the grid when the grid is full of dirty energy. But it's only certain brands of vehicles that allow that bidirectional charging. But that definitely supports reducing greenhouse gas emissions in a really meaningful way. So in purchasing that vehicle, it might be worth just exploring which vehicles allow bidirectional charging and what that program looks like to see whether that's something that we could contribute to.
So I have that program on my house. So I'm Marin Clean Energy.
So they have different programs. They have one where they can optimize when they charge your car. But this is a brand-new program, and there's very few vehicles that allow that bidirectional charging to pull from the car battery into the grid. But there are now a number, and there seem to be a lot of pickup trucks that fall into that category. And that really helps clean up, allows Marin Clean Energy to supply energy from batteries effectively that have been powered by the sun at times when they've only got dirty energy otherwise on the grid. So it's really meaningful. So I would just look at what vehicles qualify.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they pay you for it, too.
So has anybody investigated putting some solar panels on the corporate yard and a battery?
Yeah, not recently. I believe a few years ago, it was something that the city was investigating. And Robert may have more details.
You know, if we're going all electric or 80% or whatever it's going to be, I mean, that makes the most sense is to have solar with the battery. And then if it's charging, it goes back into the grid during the day. And MCE pays you, whereas PG&E doesn't.
There's a lease-leaseback. So I think that's prohibited because of the lease-leaseback, correct? Because you can't do that.
Yeah, that's challenging. And at the time, too, the grants that were being provided, we looked at this a few years ago, the grants that were being provided were starting to evaporate for solar-only. They're really heavily trying to encourage
Battery.
Battery backup systems. It's kind of a final solution for the off-peak or for the demand time where you don't have clean sources there feeding back into the grid. So we looked at that solar with battery backup as part of a solution for the courtyard and the parking lot that would power some electric stalls in the parking lot that's nearby. At the time, it was just cost prohibitive, and there weren't any PPAs that were interested in taking on that type of arrangement for us.
Too bad.
But things may have changed, though. I think we still have a line item in the budget for around $100,000 for that project. That's, again, we're waiting to, for the technology to change.
And do we get to vote on the car?
Yep. Oh, the car, so.
Which car are you going to get?
What's your vote?
Okay, anything else on these two items?
Now, with the answers provided and our comments on the record, I'm happy to make a motion to approve 8E and 8F.
We have to do public comment first. That's okay. I caught you this time, instead of you catching me. Any public comment on items 8E and 8F? Any on Zoom?
I see none.
There you go.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to item
nine.
Nine, which is the individual consent calendar. And I am recused from this, so I will pass this on to Vice Mayor Wilkinson to lead this item.
Sure. So this is item 9A, which is in relation to private improvements in the public right of way for 16 Bayview Avenue. Does any council member have any questions or?
I have a question. So usually on the revocable licenses, when there's landscaping involved, the plant is specified. I know they say they're going to be planting native bushes, but, I mean, have they said sort of what they plan on doing?
We, we unfortunately didn't get the specific planting for this. The, the owner is here with us tonight. They might be able to provide some more information on the type of plant. Originally, the application came in as an exemption for a fence repair on the property line. And at that time, we, we needed a revocable license for the hedges as well. So the, the hedges, it took a little bit of extra time to get there. But we, in an effort to try to help them get to the revocable license, we brought it with, as, as you see it today. So perhaps the owners might be able to provide some more information on the type of hedge.
How would you like to hear more from the owner?
Well, if they know what plant they're thinking of, I think it would be helpful to, when we have a revocable license, to know everything that's going to be planted.
Do you want to come up to the podium to provide details?
No.
Do you want to come up to the podium to provide details on the planting descriptions?
My name is Israel Brios. I live on 16 Bayview Avenue. It's basically the fence outside that parallels the street, which hasn't been replaced in 35 years since we moved there. And so we want to replace the fence, but there's a hedge in front of it along, parallel to the street. And that needs to be replaced as well because the drought has taken a toll on it. So what we were told is that we need to do a landscaping drawing for the hedge replacement, which we submitted. And the, then we could, and then after that, we could replace the fence. So the fence is actually, I think, on our property, the fence itself, but the hedge is, I think it's city property. I'm not sure. Anyway, we just want to, we just want to replace the fence. It's a simple fence. And, and we also want to replace the hedge. So.
And it's just replacement in kind for what is there currently?
The what?
It's just replacement in kind for what?
Yeah, yeah, just what's there. Just the same.
The same thing?
The same hedge.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yes, the same stuff.
That's easy. Thank you so much.
That was the question.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Is there any public comment, Beth? Thank you.
I see none.
Can I get a motion?
I make the motion to approve nine A for the revocable license and private improvements in the public right of way at 16 Bayview.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I just wanted to announce that I neglected to say that I was recused because of living within 500 feet of this house. So I said I was recused, but I neglected to say the reason why. And thank you for taking over. Okay, so next item is our first public hearing item, which is a discussion and possible adoption of resolution 2025 12 updating and establishing various user and regulatory fees. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you again.
So thank you and good evening, Mayor Cooper and council members. The item before you this evening is to present the findings and recommendations from the recently completed comprehensive user fee study. On September 9th, 2024, council approved the contract for ClearSource Financial Consultant to conduct the user fee study, which started in October. On March 10th, 2025, we brought the draft findings to the council for their review and input. This is the first time the city has conducted a comprehensive analysis of its user fees. The fee study will ensure that the city has an accurate fee schedule that reflects the true cost of providing services. The goal of this study was to achieve a maximum cost recovery while providing a fair, comprehensive, well documented and defensible method for identifying and distributing costs. If approved by the council tonight, the fee schedule will take effect on July 1st, 2025, the start of the new fiscal year. At this time, I will turn over the presentation to Terry Madison, President of ClearSource Financial Consultant, who will present the study's results and the changes that were made since the March council meeting. Staff and Terry will be available for questions regarding the fee study results.
Thank you.
Well, I will do my best to be briefed tonight since this is the third time the council has been briefed on this topic. I have about 16 slides. Many of them you've seen before. A couple are new since the last time this topic was before you. I'm repeating the ones you've seen before, just in case any interested member of the public is curious about the concept of user and regulatory fees. So just by way of reminder, communities generally use their tax revenues to fund services that provide this broad community wide benefit. And most of the time we think of these as like public work services, public safety services, park maintenance type services. And we see use of what we call fees and charges when we see a direct receiver of service. So direct receiver of service, frequently we think of direct cost recovery. And most of the time what we think about in this world is like the idea of permit issuance, plan review, inspection of construction and so forth. And the reason cities think through this topic periodically and conduct studies like this periodically is to ensure compliance with legal requirements because these are fees. They are governed by the California constitution and the California government code, which essentially say we can recover up to our cost of service, but we don't want to recover beyond that. We don't want to turn this into taxation or profit making. It is the idea of cost recovery. When we do recover these costs, by definition, we're freeing up general fund resources to be used for some other purpose. Typically, we think of that as those broad community wide purposes. And then the other thing we're doing is helping position ourselves to continue to meet the service level expectation of the community by funding the services we're providing. I mentioned the councils sort of received input on this topic twice. Once was at the February 13th, council annual planning session. And most recently on March 10th, at your regular city council meeting, we talked through initial findings and general proposed information that was anticipated to be brought before the city council. Just by way of reminder, what we're presenting and what we've conducted is what we call a cost of service analysis. It identifies the city's cost of service and frequently councils receive that information and then make policy decisions about what portion of the cost of service do they want to recover from user and regulatory fees? And frequently they think through this concept when they see a clear receiver of service and the idea of high individual benefit, they frequently target higher cost recovery levels. And when they see more broad community benefit, they frequently target lower cost recovery levels. The examples we use in the prior council meeting were the idea of if I want to remodel my kitchen or add square footage, I am the one that enjoys the enhanced property values. I'm the one that enjoys the new kitchen and so forth. And so frequently councils target high cost recovery levels for that because if we incur the cost, but don't recover it from the receiver of service, then by definition, the other residents and businesses in Belvidere are covering a portion of that cost. The example we use for lower cost recovery thresholds was the idea of like youth programming, library services and so forth, where we do see direct service recipients, but frequently councils say, I would like to partner in that effort. I think there's a community good in giving people access to new life skills and information and so forth. What we noticed in the cost of service analysis was in the aggregate, we believe that the fees that we examined that are generally, we, we call them service based fees. It's typically building permits, planning reviews, engineering fees and so forth. The service based fees cost Belvidere about $2 million a year to perform. Today, you collect about a million dollars in cost recovery. So the fees for services, about a million dollars for about $2 million in costs. So we would say you have less than full cost recovery. We would say you have partial cost recovery to the tune of about 50%. It varies by category, but in the aggregate, that's what the picture is saying. What we've talked about is the idea that these fees that we're examining are primarily regulatory in nature. We do think there's a high level of direct benefit that comes from construction activities, the enjoyment of the property enhancements and the property value enhancements. The idea that, that cost recovery allows you to tell other Belvidere residents that they're not subsidizing somebody else's construction costs and so forth. In order to enhance cost recovery, we do think the underlying hourly rates for service need to be recalibrated. We have proposed that in this analysis. You are, you would continue to make minimal use of time and materials billings. When we do have those time and materials billings, the deposit amounts have been recalibrated to give your applicant a closer sense of what they would expect to pay. Additionally, this type of study happens periodically. In the in between years, the resolution before city council proposes annual inflationary adjustments to fees. And the way we phrase that is annual adjustments to fees not to exceed the change in regional cost inflation on a year to year basis. And then let's see what else. I think that's the, that is consistent with what the council heard at the March 10th meeting. Based on just general guidance the council provided at the March 10th meeting, staff has proposed some additional refinements from what you reviewed. A few of the items are considered are targeting an increased cost recovery of long range planning costs. You'll still have partial cost recovery, but it will be higher than what you saw on March 10th. Some of the planning reviews that were originally proposed as time and materials billings are now proposed to be fixed fees. The idea there is trying to minimize that use of deposit based billings to give the applicant a greater idea of what they are, what they would anticipate paying. You could still have additional fees that apply if something is outside the realm of normal and so forth. But it, it is intended to, to simplify the schedule and allow for efficiencies. And then there were some fees where we just felt like, once we move from a time and materials billing perspective, we can more closely align fees to service provided. Additionally, there is less than full cost recovery that's targeted for historical preservation review. And one of the council members had asked if there was anything we could do to just continue to make an effort to simplify while still thinking through the idea of fairness and reasonableness. One of the things we've done is to modify the building permit fee structure for new construction and remodel projects that we do think would simplify permit fee estimating and calculations. So you've seen this chart before, but it essentially illustrates in numbers what we talked about in the aggregate where you are at, you know, about 53% cost recovery to in the aggregate, which means about a $968,000 general fund subsidy. We anticipate in the initial year of 594,000 additional cost recovery. And that is to offset costs that the city is already incurring. So it's not the idea of a whole bunch of service level enhancements. It's cost the city of Belvidere has today, but just isn't fully recovering. The next steps would be for Belvidere City Council to consider a resolution to adopt the updated schedule of fees and charges that would go into effect July 1st at the conclusion of a public hearing that I think commences at the conclusion of this presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone have any questions for staff or Terry, I guess, at this point? Anyone? Okay, council member care.
Yeah, okay. So some of the fees have a sort of like a deposit. And then as it progresses along, it's going to go into, you know, time and material. If it goes over that amount, correct?
No, I think they are either fixed fees or they're considered time and material fees with an initial deposit.
Okay.
But the idea is it would be a time and materials, not a minimum fee.
Okay, so the one I'm talking about is the deposit with time and material. So my question on that is, is that we have a system currently that uses the time and material structure with a deposit. And the staff I don't think receives the proper training on how to count for their time, for their time. Their material should be pretty obvious, but their time. So is, if we're going to continue with this time and material, are we going to have some assistance to, to the planning staff as to how they should calculate their time?
Well, I do think one of the things we've done is to try and minimize the use of time and materials billings. And I think frequently it will be when you have the use of outside services like environmental reviews and so forth. But in the report, we also document the categories of service, which we believe would be logical for time and materials billing, such as intake, initial report review, completeness review, meetings with the applicant, preparation for commission meetings and so forth. So occasionally staff think, oh, it should be only the direct work of reviewing a report or preparing a report for commission or council review. But there are really a lot of additional support actions you provide that would be logical to be billed for in a time and materials billing process. So we did outline those. I don't know if there's anything additional to that.
If I could just say something, the ones that we still have as initial deposits are sort of for larger would be considered much larger projects. And I think we do, Helga and I have been working on, you know, you called it a system, outfit system and air quotes. But we do, we are streamlining it. We are using it more. And these projects would, for example, would be like Mallard Point, right? So we could really have one spreadsheet dedicated to a much larger project as opposed to right now when we're managing multiple projects and, you know, not necessarily focusing on entering our hours and and so I think it will work.
Okay, all right. That's good to know. The other question I had is when you look at the, the examples, you give fees for like up to 25,000, up to 50,000. It seems that the lower the value of the project, the higher the fees are weighted. And as it goes larger, they're not weighted as much. And the, the reasoning behind that, from what I read is, is that with a larger project, you have some savings, economy savings. But in today's reality, I mean, a project of 25,000, I mean, is pretty much just maintenance work. I mean, maybe somebody might be able to remodel their bathroom with new tile and a tub and a vanity, maybe. But it, it seems that we're almost penalizing the people who are doing maintenance work versus, you know, true, true improvement. Which brings me to my next subject. Well, I guess that's a comment, so that's not a question. So my question then for you is, is, is it true that the, the lesser your project, the more you're going to pay to have a, have your water heater replaced or your furnace or?
So I would say, I think I follow what you're saying and I don't disagree with you. I would just be very careful to say we are not intending to penalize anybody. We are intending to recover. We are intending to recover cost of service at different thresholds. And the idea is even small projects require a base level of city effort. And that is what is intended to recover from the small projects. And it is a, the fee works out to a larger percent of the project cost than it would for a million-dollar project, let's say. But what we can't do is say, try and keep these lower projects, small dollars, and put that on the backs of the million-dollar project. The, the idea behind cost of service is that if the city council wanted to subsidize a certain project, it can choose to do that, but it would cover that from its general fund. It couldn't put that under charge on the backs of the $20 million project, let's say. There is an economy of scale where, let's say, at a $25,000 project, the fee represents like 4% of the project cost. And at a million-dollar project, the fee represents 2% of the project cost. That is consistent with what we see from agency to agency to agency. And when we talk through with building officials, the idea is absolutely a million-dollar project takes more effort than a $500,000 project. And a $2 million project takes more effort than a million-dollar project. But a $2 million project might not take double the effort of a million-dollar project. It's some, there is some scaling of effort.
Okay, and then on your SB9, you're not recovering 100% from SB9 lot splits and projects. Was there?
Now, that was specifically my, my, there are a number of these that I just think we, we're going to step in it if we raise our fees on some housing directives that we're promoting in our, in our housing element.
Oh, okay. The housing element, remember that?
I mean, I mean, I mean,
No.
We're specifically promoting and incentivizing and ultimately counting on the utilization of SB9 developments. So it wouldn't, it's inconsistent for us at the same time to be raising our fees for those. So that was, and it hasn't happened and we're likely, it won't happen with great volume. So we don't see it as a, as a financial consideration. It's something that broadly speaking does have on Terry's scale, some public benefit because we're achieving more housing, more formal housing for the community.
Okay, I get that. So another question I had was on page 12, you crossed out a bunch of projects.
Is it at the bottom of page?
Yeah, bottom of page 12, was there a reason?
It's like a restructuring of fees, like an antiquated fee structure.
That relates, that relates to, to your comment about some of the time and materials. Because a lot of our time and materials were spread around between subdivision work, zoning work, development work, PUD work, all the various elements. Terry and company put them all together, crossed them out and consolidated them all into a broader category for zoning work that would require development time, consulting time, and would all be on a time and materials basis and easier to encapsulize and track because it's a larger program. And I think there's only four things that we're now doing time and materials on. Environmental work, there's two of those, planning work for SB 330 and 35 projects. And then development work, as we talked about zoning changes, development things, planned development projects, which are more, more, as Rebecca talked about, able to be managed and tracked more, more effectively than our day-to-day work of design review, exceptions, exemptions and commission work.
Okay, so, and then what was the reasoning behind, I know he knows the answer. So what was the reasoning behind the raising of the encroachment fees for the half-day and the day?
Well, I don't know if you did.
If we did, it was very small. I don't, I think they were left unchanged.
No, they were raised from 53 to 70 and.
Well, I actually think you should kill the encroachment for the half-day still. I, I, I think, I still think that gets gained far too, far too frequently. And why it's not half of a full day makes no sense to me whatsoever. And people are buying the half-day and if they go over, they say, oh, sorry, you know, and there's no, there's no repercussion. So I don't know why we wouldn't just get rid of the half-day if our cost is legitimately that for a full day, the same as a half-day. Why have a half-day fee? It's, oh, I, I raised it before and you guys didn't change it, so I was going to raise it again.
Why don't we look at the data for a year and just see what that looks like in a year's time?
We recall, we, we developed the half-day as a means of getting people off the roadway as fast as possible.
Yeah.
I think it was for deliveries, like I'm having a new refrigerator and they're only going to be there for an hour.
So I think the idea is if you give someone a, a full day, they're going to take more time than they need because they're not in the rush. And so there, there, there's maybe a need for a half-day, certainly with the road closure.
One, just one idea, in case it helps the council, is our fundamental belief is that fee schedules are intended to be dynamic. And that you do have the opportunity as a council to make a decision this evening, see it in practice and come back and make refinements as needed. So our hope is that we would move Belvidere forward and that tonight you're taking action on many, many, many line items. But next time you see the schedule, you may say, I'm doing broadly inflationary updates and two or three refinements that I'm seeing. Hey, I could use an additional category here now that I put this modification into practice. So our hope is that you would treat this as a dynamic process that is part of your normal operational reviews.
Okay. And then, it's not a question. Lane abandonment. The lanes we have are public lanes, yes?
It's under Public Works.
That's a, that is a common in Public Works.
Yeah, it's a lane abandonment, I mean.
We have situations where there's been either lane swaps or land swaps. I think the most recent one was maybe on Corinthian Island, that was before I got here, where we actually abandoned the lane and then took over another section of public right-of-way. So.
So, but would we be paying for that? Or would the other person that's doing the swap pay for that?
It's from the person who's doing the swap, yeah.
Okay, and if we chose as a city to abandon a lane, as a lane, for whatever reason, we wouldn't charge ourselves, right?
No.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, that's my, oh, why didn't we raise the road impact fee? I know, why didn't we?
This is, this is a study of service-based fees. The road impact fee is intended to offset like the cost of infrastructure that's being impacted by new development. And so our firm isn't qualified to, to do that work.
It's a different nexus.
Oh, it's a different study, okay, thank you. That's a good question then, because I thought he was supposed to do it.
Anyone else have questions?
I have a quick question, which is more of asking you to explain. So we know, we, you know, we hear from residents that we should be ramping up to that 100% as soon as possible. And our ultimate target is 92% cost recovery. Can you just explain in layman's terms why we don't necessarily achieve that immediately? Or why you've been more conservative in the one-year forecast? And it does not reflect, and explain that it doesn't, as I understand it, does not reflect a desire to get to the 92%. It's just being conservative, is that, can you explain the methodology?
So I would say that generally, we are targeting full cost recovery with two exceptions. And those two exceptions are at the general plan update fee and the development services technology fee. Those are both what we call surcharges, so that you can earmark them and identify them and use them for specific purposes. When you try and recover the full cost of those, frequently the surcharge is sort of disproportionate to the fee itself. And so we just felt like, when we look in the region in terms of typical surcharges for these services, we felt like it would be unrealistic to take Belvidere there tomorrow to full cost recovery for these general plan update and technology surcharges. Again, I don't think Belvidere should be opposed to thinking about it a few years from now. Is there additional room? And, and those kind of things in, in your next evaluation. But I felt like at this evaluation, what we could focus on was the idea of these building permit services fees, current planning and so forth. And we are trying to get them to full cost recovery when possible. We're trying to get them to full cost recovery quickly. In a few areas, we felt like it would be prudent to say, let's believe that that cost recovery may come over time. And it's where you have maybe new fees being proposed and that we're not familiar with them. So we haven't had history with them before. Or you're continuing to make some use of time and materials billings. And time and materials billings, we always want to err on the side of conservative because you really are, the idea of asking staff to sort of change some fundamental approaches, it just may take some time to, to incorporate that. And so we would hope that the majority of your fiscal impact would happen in the near term. But it would continue to have some slight refinement to enhance cost recovery over the next several years.
I, I think one, one question that I have that Vice Mayor Wilkinson might be asking about is, are these fees guaranteed? When you say we're, we are subsidizing 934,000, whatever, whatever. Is, are you saying that automatically these fees are going to bring that in? Or is this dependent on how many projects come into the city? So it's not as if this is a hard number. And then therefore, we shouldn't be assuming that number at the full amount, given the first year, when we have to even see where this whole fee and permitting project leads us for the next year, is that correct?
You said it perfectly. I would not disagree with any of that.
And, and it's also, also just follow up on that quickly. The determination or the, or the, or the, the, the assumption or the conservative assumption that you're going to achieve 82% versus 92% at this level in no way affects what we're setting the fees at. We're setting the fees with the exception of a very few examples, as you, as you pointed out, at 100% of our expected cost. You know, the variables that, that will get us this full recovery is our, our expected cost, what we, what we anticipate. They are going back, going forward, you know, number of permits, so forth. So, so that's why it's not, but it's not like we would target 82% and make our fees less today to achieve that. We're, we're, we're putting our fees at what we expect to be the full 100% cost recovery for 95% of the services provided.
Correct, but if you experienced a downturn in development or changes in legislation and so forth, the numbers could look.
The number that you're putting in is not a guaranteed number.
Absolutely.
It's just a potential.
And this, and Terry, this is based on five years' worth of historical data, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the economy can make a big difference and the change in fees could have behavioral impacts on top of that.
And we've seen, we've seen the economy make a difference in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's really important to point out. But I was a little confused about the general plan that, and I think it was technology that you were discussing. So have we inserted fees that will, that are earmarked for the general plan at this point? And I guess my question on that is then, many of the statements in here, including one of the whereas's in the resolution and in your slide presentation, talked about direct benefits to individual applicants seeing the benefit. And that when something benefits the whole community, you wouldn't necessarily. So I don't understand how the general plan, which in my mind benefits the entire community, not just an individual housing development project. So why, why would that engender a fee? When it doesn't seem to fit your definition?
So the general plan update is not proposed at full cost recovery. When we were looking through that chart, we said there is the idea of full cost recovery and no cost recovery. And there's in-between where we'd say there might be a sharing of benefit between the community and the receiver of service. In the California Government Code, there is guidance that says that you can recover the cost of preparing the plans to help you say yes or no to development. We believe the general plan, the housing element, those are critical documents for you to be able to say yes or no to applications. And so that's why.
I don't know if you found out, but you don't have a lot of choice on that anymore.
So, so that's why communities try and recover at least some of the costs of general plan updating. And it will be a fraction of the cost.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we've had, thank you mayor for that comment, but we also had some, some public comment on that as well. And just to further what, what Terry had said is that the general plan update is, is, is in all updates. And a significant portion of that, as we've seen more recently, is the housing element, which, as you just described, dictates a lot of how we manage and approve or disapprove home development projects. So it's very related to the ultimate fees that we charge for this. So, so there is a very direct, there is a very direct allocation, a very direct responsibility for new development in our city. Hence the, the target recovery of 25, 29% on that. And the technology likewise at 57%, a significant portion of our technology is the tracking and development of projects. The biggest business we have in our city is servicing the, the projects, the planning and building department. So they are directly related, they serve the whole community as a whole. But there's very direct relatable attributable cost to individual benefit. So that's where we get the middle ground that Terry was describing.
Okay, I appreciate that response, thank you on that, it cleared it up for me. So I think the other questions I had have been asked already. So I know we had, as council member Mark mentioned, we did have correspondence from one of our residents. Do you feel that we've covered Ms. Bynes' questions adequately?
I think she talked about the development technology and the general plan updates. I think we've talked about that. She mentioned the historical aspect of looking at the past three years, which this analysis does look significantly at the past five years to determine the cost structure average over that time going forward. The further comment, which I think our, our staff needs to take seriously and come up with a game plan on how to track our costs going forward. Because the in-between years that Terry was mentioning, we can't evaluate how we're doing unless we are still able to track our costs against these projects. So we have to have some methodology to do that effectively. And that was one of Linda's comments about how are we going to do this going forward? So that we know that these in-between years are in fact succeeding relative to our goals. A discussion on proper representation of cost of service, is it really an estimated cost or is it actual cost of service? That's accurate, I mean, it's, it's real cost and it's, and it's, and it's based on some assumptions. And the, as you talked about, recalibrating those costs going back. So it is, it is a combination of the two. She has a, a large discussion about design review and the, the breadth. And are we providing, since we're taking away the cost of service, sorry, the, the time and materials approach? Are we giving enough depth? Are we having small projects and large projects represented? The one thing I would say about that is that, and Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong, but easily half, if not more than half of a designer view are handled behind the scenes through exemptions and exceptions, which are handled at a significantly lower cost. Once it gets to the planning commission, they're all big projects. I mean, they're not necessarily all big projects, but it's the same amount of work involved from a planning staff perspective. So I think there is a, a, a good depth across the designer view services provided from $2 to, I think, $11,000, I think is the, is the spread of the services to that. So I, I, I think that was, a lot of thought was put into by our planning staff, our, our, our financial management and our consultant to represent the fee for the services provided. And again, I think that's going to be the area we really need to track our time so that we can modify those, those fees as we see that data come in. And I think finally, And I think finally, Linda asked about why are we not getting full cost recovery on a few things that we mentioned, SB nine, and one of them is historic preservation. Now without Mills Act, it is entirely a community benefit. So that's a reason for that fee not being higher than its up to a hundred percent. DR extensions and SB nine environmental review and, and, and category exemptions for environmental review. Those are all HCD driven in the sense of we don't want to promote these as ways of enhancing mobility, enhancing affordability at the same time raising fees on them to, to diminish those. She had a comment on refunds. And I think that's pretty clear in the, like, I, I can, I don't need to get into that, but I, we can defend how we, how we refund policies pretty comfortably. And then Linda, I can certainly talk to you further if you want to, if you're online about this and answer any further questions about this. But I, I do think this conversation has mostly addressed her comments.
Thank you. Thank you for reviewing those so carefully. Well, then, since we have no more questions, does anyone here in the public have any questions about this item? Or online on Zoom? Okay, we must have asked everyone's questions, which was great. Then in that case, can I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash?
Can we have a discussion?
Oh, sorry. I forgot about that. Okay.
I think we should move to a motion. No, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate all of the work everyone has done, both staff and also the folks at ClearSource. It's a very thoughtful, very strategic approach. It's very sensible. And I think to a point Sally has made, made earlier, I think we just have to get this into the community and try it. I think, you know, sometimes, you know, perfect is the enemy of good, as they say. And I think this is better than good. And I think we should get it out there and, and be very, you know, proactive in terms of evaluating how it's doing and where we think we need to make refinements and where we don't. So I'm very, very supportive.
I would like to add that I would very much like to thank staff. I know this has been something that goes back to Amber's days. I think when you guys have been nagging us forever to try to do a proper study and we've finally done it, obviously with a great amount of work from you guys. And especially to Terry, you are the most bang for your buck of any consultant I've ever met. I mean, your fees were under twenty thousand dollars, as I understand, and you're bringing us in a huge amount of money every year. So I hope we will continue to use you on a continual basis to keep our fees at an appropriate level. So thank you so much for your work.
Okay. So yes, thank you for this. I think it was very enlightening. And I know that the staff put a lot of work into it. I can support it. I have a couple of things that sort of are gnawing at me that I just want to say is that on maintenance things such as a water heater replacement or a furnace replacement, potentially maybe a roof replacement every twenty to thirty years. That when we're replacing something in kind, it's, I think, a quicker, easier thing to do than if you're dealing with a larger project. I would like to see maintenance, because I think what's going to happen, and actually I did some research on other cities. In fact, Novato, in their recent fee study, and it looked like ours, did you do them? They, so you know what I'm going for. So they have, because they want to encourage people to get a permit. I'm not recommending this, but they have no fee for water heater replacement in the same location. Furnace, no fee in the same location. Air conditioner, no fee. And I don't know, they had something else in there. I forget. And I don't think it should be no fee, but I think it should be a lesser fee because it really is simpler to put a permit in to replace something. And I think, oh, Brian's not here, but I think it's also a simpler process for the inspector when they come to inspect that it's a quicker process than if it's a new house. They have more things to check when it's just a replacement. So I feel that, I think we should consider, because if you look at where the fees are going, a lot of, well, a lot of people don't do it anyway. But I mean, the fees for water heater and furnace are jumping tremendously. And I think people will just stop getting permits, which I think is a, is a hazard because we're dealing with gas or electricity. And if you don't get the permit, then contractors feel they can skip a few things that cost a little extra money to actually do. And I had that recent experience when I had my water heater. And I told the plumber, I'm getting the permit. He went, oh geez. And so, I mean, he did a whole lot more than what he would have done if the building inspector wasn't going to look. So I think it's something that we should think about, maybe having a fee for maintenance kind of things that don't penalize people for maintaining their homes. The other fee that I think is, it probably takes the time. But the other fee that's really out of whack is the resale fee, raising it to eight hundred dollars. I looked at all the cities that have an inspection. The only city that doesn't is Novato and of course county properties. But the most expensive resale fee was in Sausalito at four hundred and ninety dollars. And the rest of the fees range from one thirty, two fifty, and then the rest were all in the mid three hundreds. And I think ours right now is three hundred or three fifty. So eight hundred seems like a huge leap. And I know that it takes a lot of time because Nancy has to go back and research all the permits. But do we really need to have all those permits on the resale? Maybe we give them a list of the recent ones that are in iWorks and easy to find. And then if somebody wants to come in and get a true history, they pay an additional fee.
I think when we were considering that, we also considered the fact that Nancy spends time on it. Gennaro actually goes to the site and spends time on it, comes back to the office. Nancy does a lot more paperwork type stuff with it. There's a lot of time, I think, spent with the realtors over email and on the phone because they're very anxious to get these. And so I think the, the amount of hours that are spent on this were looked at and evaluated, and that's how we came up with that one.
Because we're going to be like almost double everyone else, over double some. And I mean, it just feels eight hundred is like way too much. I'm not saying it shouldn't be raised. It just feels like eight hundred is a huge jump. And maybe eventually that's where we need to go, but right now it just seems like a huge jump above where everybody else is, and even places that have recently done fee studies that look like you.
I mean, the, 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 the purpose and the benefit of this is to, at a point of transaction, is to bring a house up to code and to notify the new homeowner of requirements to do so, which there is public benefit to that. I mean, you could make an argument that you don't need to recover all costs because you are making the house safer, more efficient, more not only for the new homeowner, but for, just, just to keep in mind, I, I, I agree with that. I don't know, we, we need or want to be an outlier across the county. But that is something that is, it's, it's in there for the public benefit. Because, because, you know, I remember when running for election here, the Realtor Board said, can you get rid of that? You know, because realtors don't want that. And, but the reason you want it is because you, you have a benefit to the community by, at that point of transaction, you have the city, in the, in our case, the city looking at the, the, the property to make sure that it complies and that the, there's nothing done illegally. And that's, that at this point of transaction, you, you, you require things to be permitted as appropriate.
But you could, you could make that case almost for anything that you do to repair a home, that it's, 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 there's a public benefit to ensure that the property, I mean, I think I still ladder back up if we're going to have guiding, a guiding principle that we're looking to, you know, recover costs that are directly related to an individual's benefit. Then I think if it's eight hundred dollars, I mean, maybe we need to go back and look at the analysis, maybe because it sounds like it. Is it an outlier? I mean, do you have the data to, to suggest how far out it is?
I have seen lower resale inspection fees, but when we talk to a staff about what goes into the resale inspection process at Belvedere, I would say it looks different than what we hear from other communities.
Yeah, I think our resale offers more information. I mean, maybe the permit history needs to be a separate fee. I mean, just put in what you have in iWorks and otherwise you have to go into the archives. And then maybe that's where you recover the full eight hundred. And you, you narrow down the time that's spent because you're not going, you're not having Nancy go through the archives to find the history on every property.
Rebecca, I'm not positive, but I think in some other agencies, I think what you get is a resale report, which is a history of permits. I'm not sure if you actually get, is it an R?
You don't actually get the permits. You just get a. Sure. I hear what you're saying. I think in the other jurisdictions I worked in in Novato, I don't think somebody physically went to the property as to what Terry's saying. I think you just got a printout of.
Most of the other cities do the inspection. I think during COVID, they stopped, and San Rafael might have stopped going out because they had a problem with one of their inspectors. And so they decided it was best not to do that. But I mean, I don't know. I mean, it just seems going from whatever we're at, three hundred or three fifty, all the way up to eight hundred. I mean, it just seems like, and it's out of proportion to everyone else. So we will be the subject of a pretty good article.
But again, if, if, but if it reflects the true cost of service, and that's what we've agreed is the, is the underlying philosophy, why are we picking out this one item to get special treatment? It doesn't feel like that aligns with what our philosophy is, unless that's not our philosophy. And then do we pick apart every other fee and make the arguments for and against the being a public good aspect to those as well?
We could, however, change the cost. So we could say, look, we feel like that, that increase is too significant. And so how might we reduce the cost of that service? So we could bring the recovery down into a more reasonable range. But I don't think we should subsidize. I think it violates the, the philosophy that we put in place here. I don't think we should subsidize anything, but we can say, let's go and see if we can reduce the cost.
I think part of, a lot of the time spent on it is actually the form and between Nancy and Gennaro getting it form filled in correctly. So I think we could perhaps be more efficient if we edited our form. You know, if that's a direction you guys want to go.
I mean, like anything else, could we condition our approval and to say with this one thing, we could, we want to go back and look at a opportunities to reduce the cost so the recovery number is lower?
Well, you can, you could adopt the fee schedule as proposed with this particular exception. You could say, I choose to only ask for four hundred and fifty. You just couldn't ask for more than what?
No, no, I get that.
Yeah.
But again, I don't want to subsidize anything. I think it has to be based on data. And so we could say staff is going to endeavor to understand how to reduce the cost of that service.
If you wanted to do, it's totally your prerogative. But I would say if you, if you do think that your staff has a likelihood of finding efficiencies, then you may want to adopt a lower fee to begin with, rather than have to reduce the fee later.
Do you think Rebecca, that there's a realistic chance of reducing the amount of hours that go, goes into this?
Yeah, that's my question.
I don't know, because I don't physically actually work on them. I think, you know, maybe we go forward with what it is, evaluate over the year. If we can create a form that is more efficient, reduce staff time on it. And then we, when we revisit the fees next year, perhaps reduce it or, you know.
Or perhaps change the scope of services as, as provided as part of that report. Reduce it to something that's, you know, more comparable to what other agencies are completing and charging.
So I would be okay with that.
I think the only hesitation I have, I'm not sure where we are with this right now. But if we were to take the full eight hundred now and then decide to go back, I think people who had been involved over the one year period might feel that they were sort of, you know, that they had to pay more than others going forward. So I, I guess I fall into either we decide what it is or we say, let's look at something in between and try to do the efficiencies over the year and see if the efficiencies work rather than and then raise it rather than raising it all the way and thinking about going backwards.
Yeah. But instead of, instead of throwing a dart at the board, we're probably better off to leave it as it is, focus on the, on the, on the scope of services as Robert talked about and put that at the top as, on the list, not the top brass, but the, but on the list of things to evaluate in this one in-between year.
And presumably if you modified that quickly, you could bring it back quickly and we could do an amendment now to the fee schedule. Does it have to be at the beginning of the? Can you amend fee mid-year?
For the next meeting.
I don't think the next meeting, but you can amend, you could bring a one-off. Yeah. At any time, you could come back and say, I'd like to adopt a resolution changing that one fee, not the entire schedule.
I think that would work. Okay, so.
What about the maintenance stuff?
Councilmember, I just do want to say, I do believe based on talking with the building official that there, the maintenance stuff that you're describing is not built off of the twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, hundred thousand that's catching your eye. There are fixed fees in place for the minor permits and they are lower fees for those like, like for like water heater change.
Councilmember Carapiet, there are standalone building permit fees for like a water heater. So there are, you know, that's, you know, a flat two twenty-nine. So it's, it's a lot lower than I think you're referring to.
Yeah. If you look at the, number, number one on the building permit fees, the standalone plumbing permit current is fifty-five and the proposed fee is ninety-five. So there's not a, it's not based on that twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, it was the water heater and the HEVAC went up quite a bit.
Eighty-five to two twenty-nine, but they reflect, as Terry's talking about, the actual services. And that eighty-five probably hasn't been changed in thirty years, for argument's sake. So I think that's the representation that you're making is that the actual cost to go out there, do the inspection, do the environmental review, sorry, the efficiency review that is required today costs you two hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Right. Any, any other discussion item?
So will we see you in a year?
Hopefully. And then just to clarify, if you do end up making a motion, are you anticipating that the motion would be to adopt fees as proposed with the exception of this one particular?
Good motion to make. How about that?
Did we want to set a fee?
We're leaving it as is.
So I can propose that we adopt the resolution updating and establishing various fees, various user regulatory fees based on the citywide user fee study, with the exception of the home inspections, which we would leave as is.
All those in favor?
Do we not have a poll of comment? We did.
We did.
They're all looking at each other.
Did that get you what you needed? No?
No.
Sorry.
So the residential building permit will stay at the three hundred for the year. That's going to stay as is for three hundred. We'll evaluate it. No, I think it should go off. I don't think it should stay. I don't think it should stay where it is. I think it should be more. I just feel the eight hundred was a little.
Too late. But Pat, I think they're going to come back with an amendment quickly once they've done the work.
All right. We'll leave it as is. I get it. It's nine o'clock.
And, and just to clarify for the record, the one that we are not changing is the, according to schedule, the residential building report fee.
The resale report fee.
That's the one we're excluding.
Yes, we're leaving it as is and not changing it as.
Thank you. I just want to be clarified. I guess we've been using slightly different terms.
Right, right.
Thank you, Council.
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay. Do we want to take a break? Five minute break? I know, but we can't just keep going. So five minute break. What? No, I had it before I came. Five minute break. Sorry, de novo. The meaning of de novo, de novo for this appeal. Is that meaning that we're just looking at everything brand new? We're starting over? Are we? What what is our focus here?
Yeah, essentially. De novo's level of review or standard of review means that you don't need to provide any particular deference to the planning commission's original decision. That and you're free to revisit the law and facts and the final determination without restraint.
Okay.
That's what that standard review is.
In the staff report, what?
This, I believe the staff report lays out the standard, but I can quickly find the language from the staff report as well.
For what's being appealed, not the, not, 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 not the broader project.
We're not looking at the whole thing, right? We're just looking at what's being appealed?
Well, you, we're obviously looking at as well as the application that's being submitted and the issue that's teed up tonight. So not the entire project or the entire scope of what the applicant may be seeking. But in, and it is set for the standard is set forth on page two of the staff report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's the entirety of the design review for the floor area. That's the project.
Right.
I did. The appellant did, or the project owner did appeal the conditional approval.
Right.
That's, that's the focus of the staff report's analysis.
Okay. Okay, then the staff report. Are we having a staff presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Cooper and council members. For your consideration this evening, is an applicant, is an appeal of the planning commission decision and on March 18th, 2025, to conditionally approve a design review application at 312 Beach Road. On March 18th, the planning commission granted design review approval to install 358 square feet of floor area within the existing walls of an unfinished storage structure below the garage. A condition was added requiring two existing exterior windows on the southern side of the structure to be removed prior to the issuance of the building permit. On January 31st, 2022, staff received a building permit to construct an ADU below the garage. Planning indicated that an ADU application was required. And on April 20th, 2022, staff granted ministerial approval for the ADU. On May 10th, the building permit for the ADU was put on hold at the applicant's request. And on June 15th, the owner submitted a design review exemption to repair the existing storage structure below the garage.
Terry, do you mind just going back there?
Sure. The approved design review exemption included expanding the exterior walls to be flush with the garage above and to install new windows tubing at the south elevation shown here. The applicant completed these improvements under an active building permit at the time. In 2024, the applicant applied for a variance to allow the southern facing wall to encroach into the side yard setback and design review to install new floor area within the existing storage structure. The planning commission approved the variance, but requested that the applicant return to a later hearing with a more detailed floor plan and the intended use for the structure. On March 18th, the planning commission granted the design review. Prior to the meeting, commissioners visited the adjacent neighbor at 322 Beach Road to view the exterior windows. Commissioners were generally in agreement of potential privacy impacts that would result from the change in use from a storage structure to a bedroom. And as a condition of approval, the planning commission required that these windows here circled and read be removed. In summary, the appellant argues that the commission's decision to conditionally approve design review was made without input or discussion with the applicant, and there was no opportunity for the applicant to discuss the solutions. The appellant states that there were no written state, there was no written statement of concern from the adjacent neighbor. And had there been, the appellant would have come to a meeting with more options to mitigate those concerns. And finally, the appellant claimed that removing the windows from the southern exterior wall conflicted with design review criteria as the removal creates a monotonous two-story mass. Staff finds that the planning commission followed the correct hearing procedure and also suggested that the planning commission made the appropriate determination when considering all of the criteria set forth in Belvidia Municipal Code, Chapter 20. The east, west, and north sides of the building have windows and doors to break up the monotony and add visual, visual interest. And the storage structure is located below street level and visible only from the adjacent neighbor at 322 Beach Road. Here, the commission had considered privacy to be the pertinent issue. Staff recommends that the city council consider the appeal and allow the applicant to address the planning commission's conditional approval for the property located at 312 Beach Road. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
I have just a few. So does a neighbor need to put in writing a concern with a project in order for it to be considered a valid concern?
No, there is no strict writing requirement, council member. I think it was the fact that there was nothing in writing, and I believe the neighbor was not at the hearing. So I believe his allegation or claim or argument was that he was caught by surprise by the objection. For example, it would be completely valid if someone, a neighbor or other resident came to the public comment tonight and made their comment on the record orally and didn't put it in writing. That would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have more than that?
Um, yeah, so I also want, if Sammy, do you have available the plans from April 21? Could you bring up page A 3.3-2? 3.3-2. Eight. Okay, thank you. And on the top, on the left side, it's the east exposure. On the bottom, it's what's existing, and it shows a fully shingled wall on the lower level of the garage, correct? With a door. And then on the top, it shows a fully shingled lower level with a window. Correct?
Correct.
Could you also now bring up the project from 1124 in page V 1.3?
Can I just, while you have that there, can I just ask, do you know how deep that overhang is from the garage to the underneath? Okay.
I could guess four or five feet.
Okay.
And what sheet that?
A V 1.3. So we we have on the left, we have this not this one. Could you go up one? Is this the only one? Okay, that's okay. That's all right.
Is this November 24 plan?
Yeah, that's the November for the variance. And then on the 32025 meeting, um, on, it showed in 1124 that the wall was supposed to be shingled. And in the, the project at 325 on GS2, it says no change to the wall. And on page three of the resolution from the March meeting, it says that the wall is supposed to be shingled. And I think partially, partially some of the wall is not currently shingled.
Correct.
And it's supposed to be shingled, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Just, I think it's worth, so since you have this up, so this was from the variance discussion at planning in November. And were the windows discussed at that meeting? Do you recall? I was at that meeting too. I don't recall that they were, but.
No.
I just want to make sure I'm remembering it correctly.
No, they weren't.
It was just about the movement of the wall.
It was just the location.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, Sammy, I'm sorry. Can you, I had the wrong page. It's V 1.1 on the 24 meeting. Okay, that middle, that the middle row, the middle photo shows the two windows in the entire wall being shingled, correct? Okay, thank you.
This, this, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I'm trying to ask if it's the same, so you don't have to keep going back. Did it also show that there should have been framing around those windows like the or casing, whatever you call it, I call it framing around the windows that match the other windows in the house?
Yes.
Yes.
Window trim.
Yeah. Trim.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So that should have been, that was an approved part of the proposed project.
Yes.
Okay, in the plans.
Plans, yeah.
So that it's, it's appropriate to ask that that's, it isn't there now and it should be. That's the correct assumption.
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, I don't know all the right words. Okay, any, anything further? Anyone? So because of the way these plans were approved and it seems the history of it is a lot of it was design review exception and and first there was an ADA, ADU, and then then it was storage and now it's a guest room. Because of the way the plans developed, was March 2025 the first time that neighbors could voice their concerns? Or was there other opportunity?
On that portion of the project, it was approved ministerially for an ADU. On that portion of the project, it was approved ministerially for an ADU. So there's no neighbor notification. And then the walls in that location were approved as an exemption. So that also doesn't allow for neighbor comments. So yeah, so I think the answer is yes, but I, I just want to dig into I work a little bit while we're sitting here and then, right, they were noticed for that, but that was more for the location of the wall.
And, and it wasn't the windows that were discussed, but where the window, was this variance? Was this already built and then you were asked for the variance? This was a retroactive, right? So the windows were there, the wall was there. It had already encroached into the side setback.
Yes.
And then you were asked to do a variance retroactively.
Yes. And, and at that time, design review was also in combination at that planning commission hearing. But because the floor plans weren't fully developed.
Right, I remember.
The commission asked that it come back when they could fully understand what, what the floor area was going to be.
I do recall that. So there really wasn't a real opportunity for discussion of the whole thing, because it didn't really move into that. It was more the variance, I guess.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so and then I think we've, we've determined that the approved plans are the ones that were shared at the November meeting with the trim and the siding.
And the shingles, yes.
Right, okay. So those are the only questions I had. Okay, now we'll open this for public hearing. Are the appellants available?
Yeah, yes, they are on Zoom.
They're on Zoom, okay. And you would have ten minutes to make your presentation. I don't know who's here, or I would call you by name.
Sure. So, good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Dave Hamblin. I'm Scott Robertson's architect. He is also on this call. And we do have some information we could share and share our screen. That's okay?
Sure, thanks.
And Scott is going to take his first part, so.
Okay.
Okay, hello, good evening. Thank you for your time. Thank you for being here. I know it's late, and I know you're mostly volunteers probably. So I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank also several of you who've been to the property today to take a look for yourselves what may be at issue with regard to the windows and landscaping and privacy. You also have a spiral binder. I hope that you do. I know that the spiral binder with a hundred and four exhibits, we went ahead and helped you get that into a Dropbox format, I believe. And so in your online documents, you should have available that spiral binder. So I'm going to throw my architect a curveball here and start by offering one document before I continue and make reference to several points and authorities and make five key points. So, and if we go to your spiral binder, if you, council members have your spiral binder, I would like to turn to page fifty-six. And I can't hear anybody, so I don't know if you have a spiral binder.
Yeah, we have, we have them.
Okay, so page fifty-six, that's actually five A. So fifty-six. So this is a from my very good friend Steve Weisenbaker. We were very good friends for over a dozen years, and he was my architect on this project at least three different times over that period of time. On June twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, he says to me, great night last night, good to catch up. The pics look like fun. Can't wait to, wait to see it all done. So if we then just turn the page to page fifty-seven, you'll see the pictures he's referring to. And he's referring to the garage structure that you see before you. If you turn the page, he's also referring to the lower level underneath the garage and two windows that you can see, the same two windows that are at issue, the same two windows on the same plane with the garage wall above. And if you turn the page fifty-nine, you'll see a second picture of the same thing. So these were the elevations that we submitted to Steve Weisenbaker as the neighbor and as the friends and as a ongoing and consulting architect. This is ten days, I think, maybe only two days. I think it was ten days after Irene Borda offered the design review exemption to move that those two windows, that wall at least, twenty-two inches to answer Rebecca's query. It was twenty-two inches, I believe, is the overhang. And that twenty-two inches, that wall was moved, moved twenty-two inches because of safety concerns. And that was the purpose and point of it. So if there aren't any questions about that, I'll go ahead and, and go forward now with our presentation. I'm going to start with five points. And then my architect's going to discuss the approvals that we had. And then after that, we're going to quickly go through this. After that, we do want to review about thirty pictures. They'll be very fast. It'll be next, 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 and next. And then, and then we do want to delve into just a little bit, if there are questions, into our hundred and four exhibited binder.
So first of all. Mr. Robertson, excuse me, this is Mayor Cooper. I, I do want you to know that we did all get your hundred and four page binder, and we all looked at it. So we, we've given you ten minutes in this, this section, so I encourage you to not show us everything that we've already seen.
Okay, then maybe I'll just recap briefly on that binder. The binder is and throughout twenty twenty-two, Steve Weisenbaker and his wife Merrill and myself and my wife, we were very good friends. We visited one another our summer homes. We rode bicycles together. We enjoyed dinners together. And what you'll see in the hundred and four documents in this viral binder is pretty much evidence of that, the fact that we're pretty good friends. And then there was a moment where there was a dispute, and after that dispute, we haven't talked since. And it's that unfortunate dispute that wrecked a good relationship. I, I, I wish it didn't happen, but it did happen. So we are going to start now with our formal complaint and remedy. This is in the form of points and authorities. We have five major points, and then I'll go through this briefly, and then the architect will go over what we have for elevations for you. So I'm going to make five key points. I believe the director's actions and the planning commission's decision to require window removal are arbitrary, lack evidentiary support, and contradict prior approvals. The five key points I'm going to outline, and I will be brief, is the wall location, the two windows, an abandoned ADU option, the Eugenia Bush dispute, which I won't delve too much into, and the neighbor's influence. Our appeal to the city council is an appeal to an unfair decision that ignores evidence and our property rights. We were granted exemption from design review and were permitted to move a wall for structural safety and install two narrow windows as documented. And by the way, on that point, the original larger window that was approved in June of twenty twenty-one, when we couldn't, for structural reasons, use that window that was approved, when we had to go underneath the southern wall of the garage, the glazing was the same. We divided that glazing in half. We did not improve and include and increase glazing just as an aside. So here we go. The, these, approve these windows in writing as my long-term friend, who was several times our paid architect, now objects, in my opinion, over an unrelated dispute, and the director claims, without proof, the approvals for an ADU option were that we chose to abandon. So the commission's order to remove the windows lacks evidence and punishes, punishes us for exercising our rights. California law, including Government Code Section sixty-five nine oh six and cases like Topanga, and you have referenced to it herein, requires evidence-based decisions. We asked the city council to overrule the commission, approve our living space and with the windows, and consider the director's actions based on the neighbor's actions biased and the neighbor's recently stated concerns dubious. The key points and authorities, number one, and they're just five, and they'll be fast. The first one is unsubstantiated claims by the director of planning and building. The new director, Rebecca Markwith, claims without evidence that the design review exemption and building permit for moving the wall twenty-two inches and installing two windows were granted only with the expectation of an ADU, contradicting the stated purpose of structural integrity and safety. The points we would make is that there's a lack of evidence, there's due process violation, and there's abuse of discretion, ignoring the explicit structural safety basis for the approvals as documented by the former director Irene Borda, and this is otherwise therefore arbitrary and capricious. The authorities that we would cite include California Evidence Code five hundred, which places the burden of proof on the part, party asserting a claim here, the director. Without documentation, the ADU claim cannot stand. Belvidere Municipal Code, Chapter nineteen oh eight, says, conditions must be clearly stated at the time of approval, not added retroactively. The case law, Topanga, in one case, planning decisions require written findings supported by substantial evidence, not speculation. Other case law, western states say that agency actions lacking evidentiary support are arbitrary and subject to reversal. Number two, quick point, and there's just three after this. Planning commissions conditioned to remove the windows. The issue is the planning commission approved the conversion to living space, but conditioned it on removing the two windows, citing the neighbor's privacy despite the neighbor's prior written approval and the location of the two windows required by structural necessity. The points we would make is, number one, there's an unstoppable, the neighbor, an architect intimately familiar with the project over many years, approved the windows in writing, and the property owner, us, relied on this approval during construction. Their reversal now, due to a personal unrelated issue, doesn't justify new conditions. And the authorities in part that we would rely upon would be California Government Code six five zero ten, where the planning decisions must be consistent, transparent, and based on objective criteria, not neighbor disputes. The Belvidere Municipal Code, Chapter nineteen fifty-two, governs exemptions and privacy considerations. Decisions must balance property rights and documented impacts, not speculative harm. California Civil Code eight forty-one addresses boundary issues. Windows within a setback don't necessarily inherently violate privacy, especially with a prior neighbor's consent. Case law that we would cite includes stiller, zoning conditions must be supported by substantial evidence, not personal grievance. Case law again, conditions on permits must be reasonably related to a legitimate public purpose and not arbitrary demands. The argument here is that the neighbor's prior written approval and photos showing the windows don't invade privacy requires the neighbor's change of heart to be dismissed. Quoting him again, can't wait to see it done, the neighbor says. The structural rationale in the application exemption from design review was clear. The commission's condition is arbitrary, ignores prior approvals, and punishes the property owner for an unrelated dispute. The neighbor's influence and bias is a third point, and there's just two quick ones after that. The issue is that the neighbor and architect retained several times over a decade or more on the three twelve Beach Road remodel, approved the windows, but now objects, likely due to a Eugenia Bush removal issue, and the director and commission appear swayed by the Bush status despite evidence to the contrary. The points we would make is that this is a conflict of interest. The neighbor's dual role as architect and complainant creates a conflict, especially if their professional ties influence city officials. Bias in decision-making, the director's alignment with the neighbor despite their approval reversal and false claims suggests favoritism or improper influence, and this includes bad faith. The neighbor's objection likely stems from anger over a separate issue and not privacy, making their complaint irrelevant to the two windows. The authorities we would cite, California Government Code eighty-one thousand, if, if the neighbor's status affects impartiality, it's an ethics violation. Belvidere Municipal Code, Chapter one point zero eight is included, case law, including Break Zone Billiards versus City of Torrance. Agency decisions tainted by bias or favoritism can be overturned. Case law again, for Mosse Beach, due process requires impartial hearings free from undue influence by interested parties. In this case, Mr. Weisenbaker and his wife are interested parties. The Eugenia permit issue, I'll briefly go into this for them, we'll wrap up with number five.
Mr. Robertson, I'm sorry, Mr. Robertson. You, you've already had thirteen minutes instead of the ten, and I'd love to give you time to wrap up. I'm not going to cut you off, but I, I don't think this whole Eugenia thing has anything to do with the appeal or anything right now for us, and I know it's important to you. But you're, you're kind of getting off track here, which is confusing for us, and it's using up all your time.
I'm going to wrap it up. I'm going to skip to number five. The added living space without window removal. So the issue is the property owner seeks to convert the area to legal living space as permitted under the building code. But the commission and director conditioned, conditioned this on removing the windows despite their prior approval. So the points we would make is that entitlement under the code, the building code and zoning allow the conversion without exceeding FAR or other restrictions. The window condition is unrelated to this right, and so that in order to abide by consistency, the city can't impose new conditions on previously approved elements, the windows, without new evidence or changed circumstances, and we're not aware of any. The ADU is irrelevant. The reasonable alternatives we offer, privacy concerns can be addressed with, with frosted glass or more landscaping, making window removal unnecessary. And I'll wrap it up and leave it right there. My architect just wants to review a couple of elevations with you, and I'll let him do that.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure I'm going to let him do it, so you know, we have, we have to give it to you, but Dave, I'll give you two minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'll go through this really quickly. Basically, this is just hopefully to bring this all back to the pointed hand and simplify. So history of the windows we have asked, been asked to remove. This is a picture of the existing conditions now. This was our submittal on the variance, as well as the design review exception with the two windows. This was our first review, design review, where everybody had an opportunity to see that there was going to be a window facing the south yard. And this was back in twenty, and it was approved. This was the single window. When the structural modifications became necessary, we immediately submitted this drawing. So, and splitting the windows, same amount of area into two. This, there's, this entire document references a storage space, nothing about an ADU, which keeps being brought up. This is just an interior shot of exactly, there's the column and beam which necessitated dividing this into two windows. When we came in for the design review to add this additional, or add floor area inside in a pre-approved shell, this was the condition, to remove two windows on the basis of privacy concerns without any conversation with us about other remedies. Staff, a staff report for that planning commission meeting supported our application without any concern for privacy. They specifically stated, the windows facing the right side yard are not within a sightline of adjacent neighbors and are considerate to the privacy of adjacent buildings. We heard the complaint verbally in the meeting related by Rebecca. Nothing from the actual neighbor. This is what we would have had if we had known, not had a surprise attack. This is a diagram showing the actual conditions, positions of the windows, sightlines, existence of existing landscaping that obscures most, if not all, visibility to their entry area. And most, if not all, of visibility of the northern, or sorry, eastern window. This is a view from the inside. These were, this is actually to scale. These are current drawing, or photos from two days ago. This is the eye level of a six-foot tall person. There is no privacy concern in this window. This window is looking at a blank wall, even if you were, get your head straight up against it. There's a chance you could see some portion of the entry, but it's very slim. This is a picture, this is the This is a picture, this is the uh, westernmost window, which is almost completely obscured. This is a fisheye, which is a little distorted, but this is the other uh, eastern eastern window, which potentially has a view of the top portion of this window. This, this was taken six months ago, and it's grown significantly since then. And this is the hedge that's there now. It's not at full maturity by any means. That is it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Do we have any questions for the appellant? Does anyone have any questions for the appellant? Councilmember Kerapiette.
So um, in in your um, presentation, you have said you're willing to make the windows opaque.
Is that correct?
Scott, you're Scott's muted.
Scott, you're muted.
If that question was directed at me, yes, of course, so we would make them opaque. But I think even better, it would be more planty. What you've conceived from the pictures, especially on site, that that hedge we built is extremely successful. We have eupines and laurels that are up, you know, over ten, twelve feet. We could easily, there's plenty of room, the pictures that we uh, would have shown you. Uh, and you probably saw on site, we've got another three-fourth feet. We could easily plant a couple of two, three eupines in there, block that whole wall, and it would have the appearance of what you're looking at right here, straight ahead. You know, to the right side of the Weisenbaker kitchen and basement window, and to the left of the arrow on the right. That's pretty thick. There's actually uh, two glass doors on the other side of Mr. Weisenbaker's lattice. You can't even see the lattice. So I would say that's fairly effective privacy screening, which is what we were after all along, and it worked out really well.
Um, and then the next question I have um, for whoever wants to answer it is um, the uh, wall um, on the southern side, um, hasn't been finished with the shingle and or the window trim. Um, was was there a reason um, that it hasn't been finished yet?
Uh, I don't have a reason right now. I don't, it's not even, I don't even recall this, so uh, we've been out of town for six months. I'll take a look at it when we're back in town in May.
Okay, those are my questions.
Okay, any other questions? Oops.
No, I think, well, yeah, I just want to maybe just confirmation that when the exemption was submitted to um, planning, it was to repair. Garage and storage requires repair and replacement of the support structure. So those windows that were on the design at that time were contemplated in the context of that being a storage space.
That's what our submittal said, yes, sir.
If you look.
Everyone's clear.
Yeah, and to follow up um, Kevin's point on that or comment on that. Uh, because I understand the history, the in January of twenty twenty-two, there was an A D U permit subsequently um, uh, approved in April and then decided by the applicant not to pursue the A D U. And that when the this permit was presented in June of twenty twenty-two, it was for a storage space. And Scott, earlier you described your neighbor's approval of the windows at that time, but he approved it for a storage space, an understanding that it was for a storage space. Am I correct in that?
I can't account for what was in Steve Weisenbaker's mind. I will say that, you know, when he did approve it in writing, it was after a a dinner and probably a bottle of wine, so I'm not sure what he was saying. The first words that he said were, you know, great time last night. And then he said wonderful pics, the pics look like fun, and can't wait to see it built. So I can't account for what was in his mind or not.
I understand you you you're you you presented it as a as a as a storage, as a as a as a determination that he approved it. Uh, I'm just trying to understand because that same month, what was what was applied for was uh, uh, the wall and the windows supporting a space that was for storage. So uh, and because there does seem to be in the report a a a an understanding that um, the use has subsequently changed, and therefore there's a different expectation of privacy associated with a living space versus a storage space. Just try to understand that. So I I think it's pretty consistent with what you've said.
And I appreciate that, I do. And and just on the on the point of privacy screening and windows. Um, if you look at some of our other pictures, I mean, the Weisenbakers have quite a few windows looking right into our property, including our bathroom and our living room. And in fact, Steve used to uh, wave me over from the kitchen window for a glass of wine, if not right off the balcony. He's got quite a perch up there overlooking our property. So while I appreciate the questions you're asking and the points you're making, it would seem to me that if we were talking about, you know, a fairness and equity here, that the Weisenbaker's windows ought to have some uh, something to do with this as well. And while you can see right there, a very successful bush could block any uh, view one way or the other from our two narrow windows in that space. And we'd be happy with that, and we would think the Weisenbakers would be happy with that, too. They were at one point, and now they're not.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, let me just check, I think. Um, I I did want to clarify, going back and listening to the planning commission meeting. Um, I think the architect noted that the south wall was painted concrete, but it it isn't concrete, it's actually painted wood. So I I did want to clarify that.
That's not true. It's concrete. It's got, it looks like wood because it's the formwork of the concrete is impressed into the concrete, which was wood.
Okay.
If you look at the inside of the, look at the inside, Dave, and show them the structural supports because it shows the concrete on the right side.
This is, you're looking at the, at the back of this, which was board formed concrete.
Right, but I'm talking.
That's not what they're talking about.
Yeah, the outside, that's the other side of it is the same.
They're not. They're talking about the the immediate surround up and and around the windows. Go back to the fisheye.
Yep.
Because we touched it.
This, no, this is concrete.
That's, I'm sorry, it's not, it's not.
Is it not concrete?
No.
It's wood.
I apologize.
That's okay, it's just that.
You're correct. This, this is unfinished, and it's the first time, first time I've seen it that way.
Okay.
So I agree, I agree with that assessment.
Okay, so.
But that is, I mean.
We're we're in agreement that it's unfinished, and that the trim around the windows is unfinished.
Correct, that it does not comply with the prior approval, but however, was inspected and approved. Without that.
But we're doing this de novo, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, it was, it was approved from a from a building perspective, not a not a designer's perspective, correct? I mean, it doesn't.
No, that's been through design review twice. It's been through design review with a single window.
Not go through design review, it was exempt from.
It never went to.
The initial single window doubled in size to these two went through design review.
Yes, it did, and it had shingled wall. And when you brought the plans in eleven twenty-four, it showed a shingle wall. And.
Those, I understand that.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. And in March of twenty-five, you put on the plans, no change to exterior. So that tells us that in all the prior approved design review, that it is supposed to be shingled in the wood trim around the windows.
Absolutely accept that.
Okay. All right, then I will open this up to um, the public, and are there any questions or comments from anyone here or on Zoom?
Mayor Cooper, I see no hands raised.
Okay, does anyone have any questions of the staff?
Mayor Mayor Cooper, I apologize, somebody.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Nancy Harris Robertson.
I just have one comment in reference to that lower wall and window framing that you're referencing as being unfinished. Um, along with adding additional privacy screening um, through planting, we would also be very happy to add shingles and finish the framing on those two windows.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that comment.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any other questions for staff?
Just one quick question before we deliver. What is, what is the measure, whether it's whether it's the window removal as as stipulated by the conditioned approval of the planning staff or the casing of the windows and the shingles installation? What's the, what's the mode of enforcement?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question? We are looking at a set of plans online.
Wherever this may go, whether it's it's denying the appeal and upholding the planning commission's decision to remove the windows, or it's 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 coming up with some alternative, as has been suggested with 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 shingling the wall and doing casing the windows and so forth, adding planting, whatever the case may be, not not presuming any direction we're going. Uh, what what measure of of enforcement does the city have that they that in fact this this property owner will do what is is said here? Would it be zoning enforcement, or would it be some sort of, I presume the um, uh, there's still a permit to be issued to to complete the floor, complete the interior. Could 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 that could whatever is proposed either in their conditioned of planning approval or what what happened tonight be a condition of an issuance of a permit for the to complete the project?
Yes, it could be prior to building permit final, the windows are, the trim is.
Building permit issuance, I'm I'm asking. Because this is under an old permit.
Are you? Yeah, we could condition it that way, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
But are are those permits closed?
They are closed, but it'd be prior to building permit issuance if the floor area is approved.
That they would have to shingle.
Yeah, so they'd have to pull a separate permit for that.
Oh, okay, separate permit, all right, well.
Or alternatively, it could be prior to if the floor area is approved, prior to that being finalized, the shingles are implied.
The planning's final, and yeah, because it should be all tied together, otherwise we get too many permits. That's the issue, when too many permits are out there, it gets complicated.
Okay.
And if he doesn't do it, then his permit's not final, then he potentially goes into a C T L fine in a new manner.
Correct.
Okay. I'll start.
Well, I I think I have to now offer uh, five minutes back to the appellant, if you have anything more that you'd like to add, but I'm going to hold you to the five minutes. So um, Scott or Dave?
Well, um, I I appreciate the offer. I don't think I need to say anymore. I think you have what you need. We want to be a good neighbor, always wanted to be a good neighbor to Mr. Weisenbaker and Merrill. Oh, I want to make one correction, thank you. Uh, in my spiral binder, page thirty-six. Oh, my gosh, this is important. Page thirty-six, your, the copy of the picture uh, at the top, it says Weisenbaker versus Weisenbaker uh, dated August tenth, twenty twenty. And unfortunately, the top of the commentary there, and my longhand, it got cut off. Where it says, I hate them, that's actually has quotes around it. It really is Weisenbaker versus versus Weisenbaker, quote unquote, I hate them, referring to the Eugenias, and this was Mrs. Weisenbaker talking to me on that day when we were trimming Eugenia. So I just wanted to correct the record so that nobody thinks that I was saying, I hate them, I don't hate them, I love them.
Okay, thanks for that correction. Uh, Dave, did you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, Mayor, I think we're, like Scott said, I think we've presented what we have, and if there's no other questions, then we'll let that.
Great.
Be in your hands.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, so um, I'll close the public hearing and bring the item back to council for deliberation, and I think Councilmember Kerapiette offered to start.
So um, I would like to see a modification, I believe it's called, to the planning commission conditional approval. And instead of window removal, I would recommend opaque windows, permanently opaque windows, no film, permanently opaque windows. And I think it's better than planting. I don't think there's more space for plants to grow in that area successfully. Um, and I do think that the um, uh, vegetation that the Robertsons put in is 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 doing their job and will continue to do the job as it grows. And I would also like to add a condition to the approval, modification of approval, that the south wall be shingled, painted the same color, and the window trim continued around the two windows.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comment that they'd like to make at this time?
Yeah, I'll go next. Um, so I appreciate the time and thought everyone has put into this. Um, you know, both um, the appellant and and the neighbor as well. I mean, I think it's it's, if we're being honest, it's been a very muddled process. If you look back at the history, um, you know, while I appreciate all of the documentation, I still think it still leaves uh, quite a bit of gray throughout the process that is unfortunate. And I think if we had better documentation, um, we might be in a different position and things would be a bit clearer. I do think that the question that I raised and and Peter also um, sort of sort of narrowed it on is is for me, it was important to note that when the windows were first proposed, um, when the plans were first submitted, and then again, when there was the exemption in June of twenty-two, it was always in the context of a storage space. And so the use of those windows is now, or the use of that space is now being um, changed, and it's turning into living space. And so I think the contemplation of those windows is different. I think, you know, if this was coming to us, um, you know, fresh, it hadn't been built, uh, I would have a different point of view. I would argue that the window shouldn't be there. I would argue that the house shouldn't be in the setback, but that's not the case. It's there, it's built, the windows exist. They've been on plans now for three plus years, maybe longer. Um, and in different inclinations, I mean, it's a, you know, a single window. I mean, it was a door before it was a window, now it's two windows. So I mean, it's not that there hasn't been something on the side of the the building and and all of the plans that have been shared. So I'm like Pat, I would um, argue that, you know, a good solution, uh, I could make the findings for the living space and and the the new use. Um, but I would want to see the windows adjusted to frosted. Um, I even was thinking, do you just frost that bottom big pane, and you can leave the top two clear? Because those are just, you know, you can see blue sky, you can't see um, people, they're out of the, you know, line of sight. Um, I'd also encourage them to plant additional vegetation, and with the hope that over time, if you know, you're lucky and this relationship can mend itself between um, the two of you, you could agree to to put in clear glass at some point at a later date. Um, if the vegetation had successfully shielded things, which I think it will. Um, I also agree that we should um, condition it on uh, finishing the side of that building with the shingle and the trim, but I think as the applicant or the appellant has suggested, they're already happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Anything to add? Okay, uh, Councilmember Mark.
I like that, Sally. Yeah, no, I don't much to add either. Yeah, I don't much to add either. The only thing I would say is, um, I don't know, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if there's any permanent um, um, opicking product you can apply without with these double pane type type modern windows without really restructuring the window almost entirely. Um, and a film can be ripped off in a weekend, it's not such a big deal. And I I personally do think opicking windows is silly, and I just doesn't, doesn't really accomplish a whole lot. I'd rather just see more developed um, landscaping um, there. It already seems to be doing doing the job. I agree completely that the um, house should be finished with the shingles and the casing. And 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 I I agree with what Kevin has said is that we are where we are, and that has has a big consideration for what we're doing. Um, I I support what the planning commission um, did and what they conditioned the project on. Uh, but objectively, at this point in time. But objectively, at this point in time, I'm not sure it's necessary to uphold that for the benefit that the neighbor would, would receive, which I think is very minimal at this point in time by removing them.
So I guess we're, we have three different ideas here for the windows. But if we were to look at planting being the factor that created the appropriate privacy or lack of, of viewing into the neighbor's home, is there, I know that right now, everything there needs to grow probably for another year or longer to get it up high enough from what I saw from both homes. And is there a way to request or acquire plants of a certain height being built, being planted so that they don't have to grow for years and years?
Well, I think what they have there, the potocarpus and the, what's the other, the laurel or something?
Laurel slower, though.
Yeah, but the, the grow, he put in pretty big ones and they've grown just as well as the potocarpus, if you look at it. The potocarpus is getting a little bit taller, but I mean, that's one of the fastest growing hedges.
And no one's going to be living in there for another year plus anyway.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think it's, I, I agree, or I hear your point, Peter, and the, the landscaping thing could be enough. I mean, the only thing, though, I was reflecting on is that they've already had disputes between them over trimming of, you know, landscaping in the past, which has either helped or hurt views or privacy and so forth. So it's, it feels like there's, it's already a challenging situation. I mean, I agree landscaping should do it, but I mean, the, the frosted glass or the opaque glasses is, is a sure thing.
I mean, it may be suggested, so I find, I find it silly to hit it in my house, but.
It's the guest bedroom, you would be there.
Unless you're a guest, you won't see it. Oh, okay, so I guess we have some consensus, given that the Robertsons have agreed to all three of those requirements or conditions of this before us tonight.
So Mike, let me just ask a question. I don't know if we know the answer, sorry. But on the south side, they have the row, the potocarpus, kind of where the windows are and maybe a laurel or something as it goes uphill. And then there's maybe two feet of dirt. So is that a fire hazard not to be able to have an escape around the side of the building? I mean, I know there's no staircase there, but if there was an emergency, it's amazing adrenaline kicks in and you, you know, get yourself over the fence. I mean, I don't know if that.
What are you getting at, though?
Well, if it's all planted, how do people, if there was an emergency and they had a, there was no way for them to go up the front stairs or go around the house to the other side to get out, how are they going to get out? They're stuck.
They can go down to the water.
They'd have to climb over the trees or they'd have to go down to the water.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's a finding or something that we're.
It's not legal point of view, gross.
Yeah. Right, so, okay. So I guess I only had one other question for Mr. Robertson. I noted in your most recent letter to us today that you were asking for public records, something or other, whatever it's called, public records request. Are you still planning on doing a public records request on the city? We've, we put the appellants and their team back as attendees. You had a question for one of them? Yeah, it in, I noted in your last letter that you sent us that you were asking for a public records request, which impacts the city quite heavily. And I want to know after this discussion, are you still planning on doing a public records request?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think based on what I'm hearing, if the vote's going to go the way that I, it seems like it will. I have no need for it at all. I would withdraw that request.
Okay, thank you. Okay, in that case, can I have a motion to approve the appeal?
I could, I can try one.
Can you summarize the conditions, please?
Right.
With the conditions.
I can try one. Like to propose a motion to modify the planning condition, the planning commission's decision on 318, conditioning the design review approval. Alternatively, we would condition the approval to complete the exterior shingles and casing and have an applied permanent opaque, opaqueness on the windows. Am I covering everything?
Well, I think and painting of the shingles.
Complete the exterior shingles and painting as.
To match the rest of the house. To match the previous approved plans.
And also, I'd also, that wasn't, that was not an official motion yet. I'm, I'm just doing this just to keep Sally here longer. No, I'm sorry. I do think that, I do think we should have this, this condition done before the next permit's issued for the inside of the house. I mean, based on the history of the work being done before approvals and before permits, I would just suggest that's the only way to ensure that this will in fact get done. That sounds horrible and patronizing, but I think it's.
So before the building permit is issued for the interior floor area, the shingles need to be applied and the trim and the painting. Okay.
Yeah, that's remediation work.
Oh, and the windows need to be opaque. Okay.
If that's emotional, second it.
Okay, was that, is that, you got enough on that, Sammy?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're done, we're not done. Sorry. Okay, thank you. We are now moving on to item 11A, which is a discussion doubtful and possible action to the approve a professional services agreement with James Lynch for consulting services. Do we have any staff report on this?
Yeah, very briefly. As you know, Mr. Lynch previously served on both the City Council and Planning Commission. Excuse me, and offer significant historical context on policy, planning and other matters facing the city. Under the proposed agreement, Mr. Lynch would serve as an independent contractor, providing advisory services on an ads needed basis at no cost, aside from some minimal reimbursement expenses. The proposed agreement does include safeguards for confidentiality, conflict of interest provisions, and indemnification to protect both parties. We here on staff believe that this is a valuable advisory relationship and we're seeking your approval to formalize the draft agreement that's been attached to the staff report. Myself and Andrew are available for questions if you have them.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this item for the staff?
Go ahead.
No, no.
No.
Oh, I have a question, two quick question. So on page 2B, it says the consultant should notify the city if they're getting a subpoena or complaint or something like that. And then it says, I get the consultant, but then it says it's officers, employees, agents, and subcontractors. I, I don't think Jim Lynch is going to have employees, agents, or subcontractors. Isn't he just working on his own?
Yes, that's correct, Councilmember. We can make that correction.
Okay. That's my question.
Okay, great. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this item or on Zoom?
I see none.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll bring it back for discussion. Do we have any comments? Okay.
This is great.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-07?
I move to approve as modified.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and on to item 11B. Discussion and possible action to approve the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Belvedere Municipal Code, Chapter 2.36, to authorize a contract amendment between the City of Belvedere and the California Public Employees Retirement System regarding employee retirement benefits. Are there any questions? Oh, is there a staff report?
Yeah, again, very briefly, as you're aware, this was an amendment to the Calpers Contract for class of members. This is a project that was identified, but as a council priority in 2021, as a means of balancing our long-term pension costs and keeping the city financially stable. So typically, the reason that we would have a second reading on consent, there are a few rare cases. For example, Calpers contracts being one of them, where a second reading must be adjourned for discussion, which is why we're doing this now. So there's been no changes to, to this ordinance since March, and we're recommending you approve it.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Okay, are there any questions or comments from the public here or on Zoom?
I see none.
Okay, great. Is there any discussion? Can I have a motion to adopt the ordinance of the City of Belvedere to amend Belvedere Municipal Code 2.36?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're on to the open forum. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to briefly address the City Council on any matter that does not appear on this agenda, but is within the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction upon being recognized by the mayor. Please limit your oral statement to no more than three minutes. Under the Brown Act, council members may not deliberate or take action on items not on tonight's agenda, matters that appear in, to warrant a more lengthy presentation or council consideration may be placed on the agenda for further discussion at a later meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to make a public comment?
Mayor Cooper, I see no hands raised.
Okay, seeing no one here, I also, I will close the open forum and seeing no other business this evening, I will adjourn the meeting and thank you, everyone.